Call this meeting of the Salem City Council work session to order. If you would call the roll, Tammy.
Counselor Kaiser, Counselor Anderson, Counselor Nanki, Counselor Leong, Counselor Osig, Counselor Hoyt.
Here.
Counselor Cook.
Here.
Counselor Lewis.
Here.
And Mayor Bennett.
Here. Okay. Make sure I got the right one here. Okay, we're going to, I don't know if we have any additions or deletions to this work session. I don't see any. We do. Want to add them?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have a revision to the agenda for the work session. Item two point, or 2A adds a continuum of care model resolution.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you. Okay, all those in favor of the addition, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Very good. Okay, Sean O'Dea.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Sean O'Dea. I'm the executive director of the Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments. I almost said homeless initiative because that's what I'm here to talk about tonight. So my job here is to introduce this topic, help set the stage, talk about where we've been and how it is we got to where we are today. And I have the distinct privilege of being able to introduce to you tonight's main presenter, which is Janet Carlson. And I'll get to a moment here on how does the Janet came to be involved in this project. So in 2016, key leaders within our region came together and said that it's important that as local governments, we band together and take a look at this issue of homelessness because the issue itself spans more than just the city of Salem boundary, just the city of Kaiser boundary, or even county boundaries. So elected officials from the city of Salem, Polk County, Marion County, and the city of Kaiser came together and created what was then known as the Mid Willamette Valley Homeless Initiative, which was a public-private, including nonprofit and for-profit sector initiative to take a look at what's causing homelessness within our community and what can be done about it. After several years of study, the group, the task force, put together a strategic initiative with specific initiatives and objectives that would be targeted towards getting at the root causes of homelessness. And within that plan, there were several strategies or items that were identified that didn't have a lead proponent entity. It was at that time that the leaders of that initiative came to the council of governments and said, would you be willing to host a position to take on the strategic initiatives that otherwise did not have a lead agency? And the council of governments board of directors said yes. At that time, we formed an intergovernmental agreement, of which the city of Salem was a part of, and we thank you for that, to help fund a position to begin the work of looking at those strategies. One of those strategies was to take a look at and evaluate our current system, known as a continuum of care, and to make recommendations to the participating agencies on how to improve this particular area of our homeless policy in the region. That's what brings me here tonight. The council of governments contracted with Janet Carlson, former mayor and county commissioner, to take a look at and study this issue, and she'll be presenting her findings and recommendations to you tonight. And we're going to conclude by asking that you adopt a resolution that is in your packet and subject to your additions, proposing and supporting reestablishing a continuum of care that is specific to our region. But that's the bottom line up front. There's a lot between where we are right now and what, and that ask of you tonight. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Janet, who's going to present to you her analysis and findings with respect to what is a continuum of care, how is our history's region, what's been our region's history with regard to this, and what our recommendations are going forward.
Thank you, Sean. And I'm hoping that you got the longer paper that I sent to Steve. And so most of the answers to those questions are actually in the paper. I realize we only have now about 25 minutes for this work session, and I'd like to have an opportunity for you to ask questions. So I'm going to, you know how I talk fast usually, I'm going to rattle through these slides and just hit highlights and then allow the maximum amount of time for you to have that conversation. So what is a continuum of care? Since 1994, the Housing and Urban Development Department of the U.S. government has required communities to create what they call continuums of care. It's led by this McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act and an application for those dollars, and it's operated through the Office of Special Needs Assistance Programs. But the really, the purposes of it were not only to go after the money, which it's not a lot of money in the scope of all the money we put in. We did a money map, and I should have looked at the number, but I think it was roughly 107 million or something like that that we calculated was going in annually. If you look at alcohol and drug programs, mental health programs, reentry programs, those types of things of federal, state, and local dollars going in. And we had, at the time that we had our own continuum of care and moved into a larger one, we had about $1 million for Marion and Polk County. So you do the scope there. It's not a huge amount of money, but it's an opportunity for all of the dollars that we have towards homeless is to start being leveraged and moving in the same direction, to coordinate those dollars and to look at common goals and objectives and outcomes and to hold providers accountable for outcomes that we all agree on. So the continuum of care programs, you'll see, are the first three in that first column. So again, it's a small amount of money, but they talk in the, I use this document called Continuum of Care 101, it's really thick, about other targeted programs. And these are just some examples of ones that they list that I'd like to integrate those dollars with veterans' dollars, emergency shelter dollars, runaway and homeless youth dollars, healthcare dollars, and even public housing, Section 8 housing vouchers to look at permanent housing for people who are homeless. So it is, it can be a very broad initiative, or if you approach it a different way, it can be very insular and very narrow, which is not the ideal. So how are continuum of care organizations structured? 9% across the nation have just a single city. Is their continuum of care? Little over half are single counties. And in Oregon, we have Multnomah, Washington, Clackamas, Lane, that are all single county, Jackson, continuums of care. There are regional, that's at least two counties. Marion and Polk used to be a regional continuum of care, and then now it's just Shute's, Jefferson, and Crook in Oregon that are that. And then the balance of state, this is about 7% in 31 states. These are large areas, not covered by any of the above. And in Oregon, we have the rural Oregon continuum of care, and that's where Marion and Polk are housed right now with 26 additional counties. So there, I've just kind of verbally given you the structure. So here's our single county, our regional, and balance of state. And you can see the diversity, both geographically, of those 28 counties for balance of state. So what are the advantages of doing a larger regional approach? HUD talks about, you know, oftentimes when you do a regional approach, the numbers are larger. Communities with expertise can kind of assist communities that have less expertise. But the disadvantages, and we have actually seen this in Marion County's participation in the balance of state, and that is that you have to come up with an efficient organizational structure that allows participation. So, you know, you might have a group here that would help Marion and Polk do their planning in the context of the 28 counties. Jimmy is here, and he'll be answering questions at the end, but he actually talks about how he tried to do that with folks here, and it has not been successful. The other is that meaningful data in this large area, if you think about whether it's meaningful for us to see what the data is for 28 counties, rather than just seeing what Marion and Polk County's data is, it's, you know, there's no comparison. And that's been a struggle for us as well, to disaggregate the data. So until 2011, as I mentioned, Marion and Polk had their own continuum of care. The Community Action Agency staffed that continuum of care. It was a consortium model, mostly nonprofits. There were some government folks at the table, but they were more involved in homeless programs, so they were not in government leadership, so to speak, where they would actually, you know, bring the whole organization along. In 2011, it was July, those representatives voted at the, well, I think Community Action was feeling like new federal requirements were coming down, that it was going to be a performance-based model, there were requirements to collect data, and they felt they weren't up to the job. Rural Oregon Continuum of Care made an offer, said, come join us. And in July 2011 is when the vote was taken. It was a unanimous vote of those that were participating to join that balance of state. So that current balance of state is administered by the Community Action Partnership of Oregon and has a couple staff people that do the work for that area. So why consider the change right now? Well, obviously homelessness is a huge issue in our communities. There's growing public awareness, expectation the government needs to do something about it. There's really a vacuum here in terms of who's doing the planning. So we've had different efforts. You know, city of Salem has taken on task forces. We had the one that Sean talked about a couple of years ago, the Mid Willamette Homeless Initiative. We have other collaboratives and networks that are involved in planning and networking, but there's no group that everyone sees as the legitimate kind of go-to group that's going to look at the entire picture from the 20,000-foot level and say, we need to go this direction. There have been a number of capacity and performance issues with continuum of care that if you have questions on that, we can elaborate on later. And then we'll show you what the dollars have looked like over the past eight years. But before we get there, just showing the rural Oregon continuum of care is like the ninth-largest numbers of homeless people in the nation. This was a 2018 figure. The balance of state rural Oregon continuum of care is the 10th largest in terms of chronically homeless, and there's the definition at the bottom, homeless for a year or more, or homeless three times in the last 36 months, for at least 12 months, and a disabling condition. And yet, with the dollars that we're looking at for the Marion and Polk, and Marion is the largest county than in this small rural Oregon continuum of care, on the left side you see where we were at when we were our own continuum of care in 2010, when, before we moved into the rural Oregon continuum of care, just under $1 million. There was a promise by the rural Oregon continuum of care that at least for the first year, our programs would be held harmless, and we actually did a little bit better in 2012 than the prior year, and in 2013, kind of moving back down. But then from 2014 on, you can see it's been progressively, with a little bit of an outlier in 2017, but it's been way down from where it was when we started. So the point in time count, if you were to look at that 20, those 2016 numbers, you can see that the amount of dollars that continuum of care gets per person, the left side are urban areas, so that's kind of a little bit of a different animal than the rural areas. But Lane County is considered rural. Compare how they're doing to ours, over $2,300 per homeless person compared to about 549 in the 28-county region. So we think we can do better, I guess is the bottom line on that. So the question, should the region establish its own continuum of care? The analysis looked at the money, but it's really not only about the money, it's about the opportunity for planning, coordination, the issue of local control, and being able to identify what our priorities are and be able to coordinate much better than we are right now. It's also looking at the inclusiveness, and a new organizational structure would be required to include all of this list of folks that came out of the documentation for HUD. We are talking to Yamhill County tomorrow about their interest, and we will be looking at a governance structure later on this year. There are a number of requirements that HUD has for a board, written processes, conflict of interest policies, certain members that need to be appointed, requirements of holding meetings, having a governance charter. There are planning requirements, including the point-in-time count, which Community Action currently does, gaps analysis, which we've done through the initiative, and consolidated planning. There's a coordinated entry process that's required, and that Community Action has also developed that and has done a great job with that. And some data that Jimmy provided between October 2016 and January 2019 shows that they have assessed almost 6,000, at that point it's more than 6,000 now, I believe, of those 2,600-plus were homeless clients, and you can see a number of them, children, chronically homeless, families, veterans, elderly, and so forth. There are also what I call accountability requirements, monitoring performance, taking action against poor performers, operating this coordinated assessment system. Right now, the way that Rock works, they're not a unified funding agency, so the dollars go directly from Washington, D.C. to the provider, which makes it difficult for anyone locally to hold that provider accountable. So we would be looking at a unified funding agency system where the dollars come here to whatever entity we select, and then they would do sub-recipient contracts with those providers, which would improve accountability. So there are a number of lead organization structures that are allowed by HUD, homeless coalition leadership, that's what we really had before, under Community Action, government leadership, which I think is what we're looking at as we move forward to the next stage. It would not, it certainly would include the nonprofits and all the partners, but governments tend to be more stable and have more resources in order to sustain the accountability work that needs to be done and the planning work. And then nonprofit organization leadership is the third. There will be some staffing needs. We look at potentially three positions that we would be needing to help do the work, a staff leadership position, a technical staff position, and then the staff to do data entry on what they, the homeless management information system, HMIS. We have a lot of collaborative partnerships, people that already meet. I'm a big believer in going to where people already meet and getting their buy-ins, so one of the things on our plan is to go to all of these different organizations over the next several months and inform them, just like we're doing this presentation for you, and getting letters of support from early learning, coordinated care organizations, public safety, mental health, alcohol and drug planning. So the changes that would need to occur would be, the planning needs to be strategic, we need to identify the leverage, set the priorities locally, have a legitimate go-to organization for our system for homeless services, and focus on our local issues. So what we need to keep in mind is, the city of Salem has its own issues within a regional context. The larger that region, the more those issues get lost. But as we move to, if we were to do Marion Polk or Marion Polk-Yamhill, we would still need to make sure that city of Salem's issues were preeminent in that planning structure so that you would have certainly the ability to influence those as a city council. Lane County's done a great job with their continuum of care. They've actually created a poverty and homelessness board, which has a charter, and they've identified dollars Springfield, Eugene, and Lane County that that board oversees on behalf of those jurisdictions. They require action-oriented people that go to the board, have voting and non-voting positions to avoid conflict of interest, and a strategic plan that is very detailed and takes all of the different dollars that go towards, this is just one page of the strategic plan to show you how they set it up, but you can see they actually identify numbers of housing units, who's going to do it, and what dollars are going to go towards it. Clackamas County also has a fantastic continuum of care. I believe that they scored the highest in the country. I want to make sure I got that right before I said it on the record. They have a steering committee, a continuum of care operations council, and a policy committee, and a structure where those feed into each other. And again, they have a very detailed goals and objectives document that sets out home, housing units, and coordinates all of that. So the change process, we would be applying, registering to HUD in 2020. It'd be about this time next year when the application would go in and designate a unified funding agency. Right now, what we're looking at doing, as Sean said, is we're trying to engage the region's leadership. We want each jurisdiction that is, particularly the larger ones, to take formal action by resolution. The resolution that you have before you, Mayor Bennett and Steve Powers were with the committee when we took a look at it, wanted to make sure that Salem could add in some whereas clauses that identify what your particular issues are, or also accomplishments. And then each jurisdiction would, we would put that together and send it to HUD by the end of this year to actually be recognized as a continuum of care organization. Also this year, we need to develop a memorandum of understanding amongst the jurisdictions that are in the cities and counties that are going to be involved. We need to give formal notice to the rural Oregon continuum of care. We need to involve housing and community services so that there are dollars available to continue that entity, and the priority setting would happen again in the spring of 2020. Lots of steps to do that. So I have gone as quickly as I could through that information, and would love to hear what your questions and ideas are.
Counselor Kaiser.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation and information. Why Yamhill County? Why include Yamhill County in this, if we go, this new continuum of care organization?
So Sean, do you want to address that? Because I think you're the spokesperson.
Happy to address that question. So one of the, because the COG initially hosted this, there's been some discussion about the council of governments continuing to host this effort going forward, housing those three employees that Janet went over. And we are a tri-county entity made up of Polk, Yamhill, Marion County. And one of the key government players in our region is the confederated tribes of Grand Ron, which has a presence both within Polk and Yamhill County. We're going to be giving this presentation to them tomorrow as well. And if they came on as a partner government, I think it would behoove all of us in the region to ensure that Yamhill County was included because of their presence within that county as well as Polk County. But ultimately, it would be up to each jurisdiction to decide. And as Janet said, we're going to be giving this presentation to Yamhill County tomorrow, answering their questions and seeing what degree of interest they would have in joining us.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is for Janet Carlson. You showed that slide that showed at one point we had 900,000, then a million, then down, down, down. And the other side seems to be going up, 3 million plus, 3 million plus.
Right, the overall's going up. The amount that we're getting within is going down.
And I guess, and I think you said this, is there money that is in what this continuum of care could be that's going to the other 26 counties?
I think there are two things going on. One is, and Jimmy, you want to come up here and speak to that? Because I don't want to put words in your mouth, but he's talked about this before and has kind of, and he's a member of the CAPO, right? So why don't you talk about what's going on?
Good evening. My name is Jimmy Jones. I'm the executive director of the Community Action Agency here in Salem. To get the answer to your question, counselor, essentially, there's a lot of things going on there. One is, there is, in a continuum as large as the Rock, and you have to realize that's 28 counties, and essentially, if you add up all the square miles involved, it would be the 16th-largest state in the United States. So there's a kind of regionalism at work to make sure that these resources are divided geographically as well. Now HUD's scoring criteria are very specific. This is supposed to be a true competition in every sense, and it doesn't matter if all the resources were going into one county or if it was geographically dispersed. But the political situation in a continuum so large, that there is a kind of unspoken sort of emphasis to making sure that each community has something. And for some areas of the Rock, that's been very profitable. If you look up in the far northwestern corner of Oregon, you look at Tillamook, you look at Clatsa, you look at Columbia Counties, their traditional pro-rata need, as it's determined, it was a matter that was very common 2011, 2012, as to how these funds were sort of divided, is actually pretty small. Their total population compared to Marion and Polk is pretty small, but they got four projects funded in this most recent round of about $850,000 total. So there's a kind of lack of geographic fairness as well. And I think that in this particular area, we sort of suffered from that.
Thank you. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a question, I just more have a comment. First of all, I appreciate very much your work on this, Commissioner. This is, I think, really great analysis, and I couldn't agree with your statements more. I first became aware of Marion County and Salem's participation in the balance of state C O C long before I was on the council, and because I've been an integral part of one of those that you mentioned. And I was stunned to learn that we were in the balance of state here. And I just think it's absolutely the right direction to go and carve out away from that and have some local control, local decision-making, and bring the resources here locally that we need to address this really critical population. So I appreciate everything you said.
Yeah, I want to second Counselor Hoy's comments. Janet, I thought this was extremely good report, and I thought the mapping was very good. This is something that I've been real interested in over the past four years, as soon as I discovered what this looked like. And I think we're headed down the right, the right road. One suggestion I've heard, and I would be curious, maybe not tonight, but over time, has been some discussion of Lynn and Benton Counties as well. It began to sound like we'd go into a, again, into a large. Is that on the table at this point?
So the steering committee that's meeting on Mid Willamette Homeless Initiative, and we're very much in flux right now with that, obviously, because as Polk County and others are talking about joining, we want to add partners to that group. But they are going to be looking at data surrounding Yamhill County. There was a request, you were at that meeting. So what is the impact to the continuum of care by having Yamhill County join the continuum of care? What does the population look like? Is there capacity at the same level of the capacity of Marion and Polk, where it would be a positive thing for those providers to come in? We're going to do the same analysis for Lynn, Benton, Lincoln since that email went out. I can tell you, I met with Marion County this morning, and their reaction was not highly favorable for that. But I think since the request is made, it behooves us not to just give a shoot-from-the-hip answer, but a thoughtful response, and then we can get back to them after we have the group take a look at that data.
Okay. We'll look forward to seeing that when you get your response. Counselor Cook.
Thank you. I'm really excited, I think, about the accountability factor the most with this, the fact that this federal money is coming into the community and that when the results are not data-driven, as you're talking about, there's really no vehicle to be able to enforce or hold the funders accountable for the results that our community needs. So I appreciate you bringing this forward.
Counselor Lewis.
I too appreciate all of the work that's been done. You know, I'll put it this way, in 2011, we unanimously agreed to let somebody else do this, and now, nine years later, we say, no way, we're doing it. So that certainly shows the strength of the growth. I do have a question, though, because I believe, Commissioner Carlson, you mentioned that this would necessitate hiring three individuals. And if I'm reading the report, the Rock, which includes 28 counties, has two designated employees. So I must be missing something. Tell me what it is.
Well, number one is that the Rock is struggling and has not had a high level of staff support. So that's issue number one, is whether two staff is actually doing justice. I have contacted, I think, Clackamas County, which Counselor Hoy was involved with, they have a single staff person, but they have a lot of bits and pieces, I think, of staff people that work for the county, since it's, and a single county is a little bit less complicated to do than multiple counties. I believe that you're going to need a senior-level person to do it, not just a technical person, because there's going to be a lot of collaboration work that has to be done, where partners are brought to the table, and people need to be convinced that they need to be doing things similarly in order to get that accountability that Counselor Cook talked about. That doesn't happen by someone who's a grant writer or a technical person, it happens with someone that has communication skills and can see things at the 20,000-foot level. So that's that senior staff-level person that would do that work. You also need a technical staff person, which would be a person that would write the grants, the applications, analyze the data, do the site monitoring, the things that have to happen for provider accountability. The third position that we have on there is this HMIS data entry person, and that is work right now that Community Action is doing. And Jimmy, at least for the outset, he's, you're getting dollars from housing community services for that, has offered to continue that. So we'd be looking at actually financing two positions through the COG, and the third would be donated staff support from Community Action.
Janet, as we progress now, who or where do we call, as counselors have questions, comments, any thoughts on this? How will this progress forward, then?
So I'm doing part of the staff work still remotely from my new digs out of state, but Jan Calvin is starting, she has actually started April the 1st, and is working as a consultant with the group. So she and I are tag teaming, and she'll be attending the meetings and doing the presentations when I'm not here, so.
So your contact information, yours and Jan's, will be available to us?
Yes, we can make sure that that's available for you, and you can send questions. And we will definitely be calling on you to be participating in the work that has to happen in order to get this together.
Well, great. Well, thank you very much. We do have the resolution. Are we to move on that? No, no. Okay. Well, enjoy the reading. It's, okay, thank you very much. We'll close this work session, and Counselor Hoy.
Call this meeting of the Housing Authority of the city of Salem to order. If the recorder will call the roll.
Let's give us a minute.
Oh, sorry, we're standing by.
President.
Commissioner Anderson.
President.
Commissioner Nanki.
Here.
Commissioner Leong.
Here.
Commissioner Osig.
Here.
Chair Hoy.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
And if you will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment? No. Nobody signed up for public comment for the Housing Authority? Commissioner Kaiser.
Thank you. I move approval of the consent calendar.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar.
All right. On the consent calendar, we have
On the consent calendar, we have the 3.1A, which are minutes from the March 25, 2019, Salem Housing Authority. And then, under 3.3A, we have a transfer of the Oregon Health Authority Loan Award from Salem Housing Authority to Redwood Crossings LLC. We have 3.3B, which is forming three limited partnerships on the Quintus South Fair Project, the Salem RAD 4% project, the Salem RAD 9% project, and to form a limited liability company to serve as the initial limited partner for the three limited partnerships. And that is it.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. No public hearings, no special orders of business, information reports. Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you very much. I have some questions for the acting in charge on both 6A and 6B. 6A is Program Management Report, and on page two of the report, you indicate, under security deposit assistance, that currently, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development's guidelines are making it difficult for the voucher holders to lease up. Could you explain why, how is that happening, and why is it difficult?
Let me make sure I get this over here. So especially in the Salem area.
Could you please introduce yourself first? Sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm Nicole Yuss, I'm the Housing, the Acting Housing Administrator of Salem Housing Authority.
Thank you.
And so, in, we have indicated that there are some barriers for our voucher applicants to be able to lease up, and that's highly due to the rent increases in the Salem area, even with 100%, 110% of the FMR. Households, we're still finding that a one-bedroom, they're coming in at $800-plus a month, which exceeds our fair-market rent limits for the Section 8 department, making it very difficult for clients to find units available for them.
Then, I'm looking at the business profile, the NAHRO news on that same report, that talks about the fact that the current administration's vision, I guess you could call it vision, or I might call it nightmare, of the funding cuts to HUD programs. How is that going to affect us here at the local level? I mean, now, look, they're eliminating Public Housing Capital Fund, a decrease in the homeless assistance grants. Will that make it easier for you to do your job?
No.
And why not?
I can tell you that the elimination of the Public Housing Capital Fund is the number-one reason the Salem Housing Authority has sought the rental assistance demonstration, also known as RAD, that you've seen a lot of information come through on. We have feared this coming for a couple of years. We've tried to get ahead of it, ahead of time, and recapitalize our structures and our buildings to ensure that they can maintain for the tenants who reside in them. If we were actually, the Public Housing Capital Fund was completely eliminated, we would have no resources to make repairs on the buildings for the future, ongoing. On top of that, the 54% cut in the public housing funding would be potentially a significant loss of our ability to maintain those structures for all the tenants who live in them. So the only other, the Housing Administration, the Housing Choice Voucher Program would not be affected for tenant-wise, but the ability to administer that program would be significantly impacted, meaning that our already, our staff that are already spread amongst a high caseload would even have to be spread even thinner.
Thank you very much. I don't know if this is, I don't think this is the appropriate time, but I'm looking at the city attorney and the city manager. I'm wondering if, well, at some point, I would like to introduce a resolution that supports our Salem Housing Authority and takes a position against the budget cuts at the federal level. And I think we could do that by a resolution, and I hope we could do it at the next meeting, and I'll talk to the city manager afterwards. One more question, if I may. Now, I'm looking at the 6B, which is the Redwood Project, and one of the things that really is extremely beneficial that I see here are the SROs, Single Residency Occupancy, that's, you know, we used to have some of it in Salem, and all cities used to have some of it, and pretty much that's gone away, partly sometimes from urban renewal, and I'm looking at the Urban Renewal Director right there. But, you know, I'm wondering if you could just talk a little bit about the import of the SROs that are going to be there on Redwood. And I think both these discussions are pretty germane in light of the work session we just had.
Okay. So the red, the project that you're discussing is Redwood Crossings LLC. That's the one that we just recently closed with urban renewal. This project originally started as a 19-unit assisted-living facility that was never completed and sat vacant for nearly four to five years before we approached the ability to obtain it. We have tried to maximize the use of this building by making it an SRO to help 37 individuals instead of just the 19, if it had remained in the manner it was. With some simple modifications to the single-room, a single-bedroom apartments, we're able to, almost double the amount of people will be able to reside in that building and receive services. So with that being said, the single-room occupancy is, is a single individual in each room that has shared facilities. In this case, in Redwood Crossings, we'll be able to give two individuals, one bathroom. Many single-room occupancy buildings have more communal bathroom or kitchen facilities, but each of these units will have a kitchenette in them, and they will have one shared bathroom. So it does actually maximize the space quite well. But the biggest hurdle that we do find with doing a single-room occupancy is that you only receive funding, which is partial to a one-bedroom. So not even at a studio level, the subsidy standard for that is in the $300 range, which makes these buildings very, very difficult to manage long-term. That is why the Housing Authority did apply for project-based voucher-ing in order to gain subsidy assistance at a higher level.
Is the problem that you just discussed, is that at the state level or the federal level?
It's, it has to do with a contradiction of both levels.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part.
It can be a contradiction between the different authorities that are involved in a project. So we have a 30% median income requirement for the property unless we get a federal subsidy grant, which will give us a higher rent level.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know if it's appropriate on this one as much as it was on the HUD budget, but I'd also like a little consideration, again, I'm looking at the city manager, is there some resolution or position that we, as a city council, could take that could offer the maximum amount of support for this? And one final question. The mayor's had an initiative to house the 100, either the top or the bottom 100, however you look at it. And we're substantially on our way to that. Will this project also help in that area?
Yes. So the waiting list will be open up with a preference for the homeless. We can't designate it for just HRAP clients. But I will tell you that those who are on our waiting list to be housed will be able to, their case managers will obviously get them on the waiting list and get them through that process quickly. Redwood Crossings is going to offer supportive services on the first floor, which is a huge benefit to the clientele who will live in the building. So we are hoping to have Northwest Human Services, Salem Health, HRAP case managers, and property managers all on sites, which is a huge benefit to the complex in keeping and stabilizing individuals.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yeah, actually, I had a question, but I, my answer is on the last page on Agenda Item 6A, and that is, and I'll quote it, "It is important to note that this budget is not in effect. It only lays out a blueprint that Congress may choose to follow. NAHRO will continue to fight for increases in HUD funding for Congress, from Congress, as well as long overdue program and regulatory reforms that can reduce costly administrative burdens." So there is, has been, up to this point, no cuts. This is a budgetary recommendation from, quite frankly, the administration that has not done real well at getting things passed. So even though I agree with Counselor Anderson, it would be catastrophic if things, these things were implemented. It's, as a practical matter, I think it's unlikely that they all will be, if any.
That's correct.
Commissioner Cook?
Thank you. So with the addition of 18 additional people able to take advantage of Redwood Crossing, we're having some density there with Fisher Road, and I know the street improvements and walkability access for pedestrians in that area has been a concern. Will the timing of this unit and the timing of street improvements, is that being coordinated at all so that people can have safe crossings and access to the surrounding community in that vicinity, especially if they don't have a vehicle?
Well, we did do a research on the transportation and means of this area, and there has been some, the area, I'm not sure if you're talking north of where Redwood Crossing would be or south of Redwood Crossing, but south of the building towards all of the access to Schmeckada, Walmart, different facilities, is, does have bike paths and paved sidewalks, which was very important to us because of the means of transportation for many of our clients. We were also able to locate all bus stops within half a mile to a mile of all of the locations. So before we ever took the project on, we did try to map out everything within a mile access to this building.
Okay, thank you.
This is the, the area of Fisher Road that is already improved. It's not the, not the south end where we're doing the new improvements. It's at the other end.
That's correct.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much for those two excellent reports. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Seeing no further business, we are adjourned.
I'll explain it. You'll feel better when I explain it. If you'd call the roll.
Counselor Kizer?
President.
Counselor Anderson?
Likewise.
Counselor Nanki?
Here.
Counselor Leon?
Here.
Counselor Osick?
Here.
Counselor Hoy?
Here.
Counselor Cook?
Here.
Counselor Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Bennett?
Here. Yes, Counselor Hoy, apologize, this didn't come up this morning when we were talking. We have an action, we have action, we're taking the city council will demand action by the Urban Renewal Agency subsequently, so we're just flipping the two tonight. So thank you for your question. Approval of additions and deletions?
We have none.
Any council, city manager comments? Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've heard, I just wanted to speak a little bit about the library situation. I've heard from many members of our community, including several from Ward 6 regarding the interpretation and implementation of the collection development policy. I've met with staff, members of the Library Advisory Board, and neighborhood associations over the past several weeks. It's clear to me that there's a strong commitment for a healthy and vibrant library among all of those groups. There seems to be two visions emerging for what a library for Oregon's second-largest city and its state capital should be. There's a deep passion, and while it might seem that there are two sides to this issue, I firmly believe there is much more uniting these two visions for the library than there is dividing it. Everyone wants an accessible, vibrant, and available building and collection. Doesn't matter whether you're an occasional user, a member of the Library Advisory Board, a staff person, or a member of this council. We all want a great library. The Library Advisory Board has recommended a process to gather more information about decisions being made in the collection development process, and I support that recommendation. While that is occurring, we need to continue the current hold on removal of books in the adult nonfiction section for reasons other than condition. It is with this in mind that I intend to make a motion later tonight to help ensure we honor that vision and honor all that unites us with our vision for the library. Thank you.
Very good, Counselor. Thank you. Anyone else? Had a chance last week to attend the, and speak to the Cowagoy Sister City 33rd Annual Dinner. If you haven't been there in a while, it's just a great, a great event. It's one of the real outstanding programs the city has had. It includes a great deal of discussion and ceremony, lots of visiting with folks. So I really appreciate that, and I hope any of you who want to go next year, just let me know, we'll make sure you come along. Okay? All right, I have a proclamation. Counselor Leon, you want to join me?
I'd like to call up the following folks to move her receiving the proclamation. Jesse Gaspar, who's the president of the Oregon Marshallese Community Group. We'll also have Nikita Kapel, the vice president of the Oregon Marshallese Community. Margaret Kiloa, Secretary of the Oregon Marshallese Community. Mark Babson, the treasurer, and approximately 10 other board members. There's also Mike Barong, who is from the Micronesian Honor Committee, I'd like to come, call forward. And anybody else, so. If you're here from, if you're here to represent either the Micronesian community, Marshallese community, or Asian community, please come step forward.
Just copy on CCTV.
As you may have guessed, this is proclamation regarding the Asian Pacific American Month, which is now underway. So, who's giving the proclamation? Whereas, following the 1990 passage of an amendment to a joint resolution of Congress, President George H.W. Bush declared the month of May Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, noting the significant contributions in science, commerce, education, and the arts made by Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. And whereas the Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have demonstrated their dedication to ideals upon which the United States was founded, and have worked for the advancement of human rights and democratic ideals throughout the world. And whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have a proud legacy of service and dedication to our community, including the Marshallese Islander and Micronesian Islander communities. And whereas we recognize Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders whose love of family and community have helped to sustain our city, particularly through the commitment of the Asian Pacific American Network of Oregon, Apano. And whereas the city is grateful to the members of the Mayor's International Council, who highlight the heritage of the Asian American Pacific Islander communities. Now, therefore, I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, do hereby proclaim May 2019 Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, and ask that residents of Salem join me in this special tribute to celebrate the contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders dated this 22nd day of April 2019.
Yawwur. And hello. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, city and local leaders. First, I'd like to give thanks to our Heavenly Father for this great event. My name is Jesse Gaspar, and I'm the president of the Oregon Marshallese Community, and I am joined by Chairman Jerry Bryan, and the rest of my board. Nikita Kapel is the vice president, and the rest of our officiating staff. We are honored to be in the presence of this great chamber. After gaining military control from Japan in the early '40s, the relationship between the Marshall Islands and the United States has been one of big brother and little brother. And if you don't know where the Marshall Island is, it's where the U.S. tested 67 nuclear bombs. nuclear bombs. They use our islands, our homes, as a nuclear testing site. And where the Ronald Reagan Ballistic Missile Defense Site is also located. Whether it's economical or military ties over the past few decades, the migration of the Marshallese to the United States in search of better education opportunities, healthcare, and more recently fear of climate change. One of the top destinations, Salem, Oregon. And because of the warm welcome, you know, we see it not only in the lower, I'm sorry, the local level, but we see it in the state level as well. The governor here, Kate Brown, and our President Hilda have a really good relationship. How the mayor wants to work with our, you know, community as well. It's an open arms type of relations that we see, that was promised to us by, but, you know, generals years ago that when we were to leave our home islands for the betterment of mankind, they would take care of us for the rest of our lifetimes. And we see that here, and that's the reason why many people, many Marshallese people come to this great state and to reside in this great city of Salem. We are proud to call Salem our second home away from home, and we thank you. In our islands, we say "Komoldada." With, from the deepest parts of our hearts, we thank you, the city of Salem and the people of Salem, and you, Mayor Chuck Bennett. We have a little gift as we step off this platform. Can you bring us, I'm sorry, Chairman, can you bring our little gift? This is an honor, and we honor you, sir, for this event. Thank you. And then if you can stand as well, city manager, I have Vice President Nikita is also going to present you with a little gift from us.
Hello, my name is Sue Lor. I'm a member of the Maok community here in Salem. I'd like to thank the city mayor, our city counselor, and our distinguished guests tonight for honoring the Asian American Heritage Month. As many of you know, you might know a little bit about the Vietnam War. The Maok people were the jungle people from the mountains of Laos that was recruited by the CIA to fight with Americans during the Vietnam War. We helped down planes, rescue down plane pilots, and help fight with Americans to stop the flow of ulteraries from the north to the south in the Ho Chi Minh Trail, trails. Many of our, many of my families and our militaries has died during the war. None of them are really being recognized because we're not listed as militaries, more like guerrilla militaries fighting with the CIA during the war. Many of our histories during the Vietnam Wars were not written in the American history because we were not, we never exist during the Vietnam War. In 1986, my family was settled here in Salem, Oregon, and we've been here ever since. This is the home where, the city and the home where I grew up and where I raised my family. And I'm very happy and very proud to call this my home, my city. So with the, uh, well-welcome and the open arms of the city, we the Maok people like to say "Wachow." Thank you.
Just on behalf of the Micronesian Islander community, I just want to, I wanted to thank you for the recognition, and members of the council, and everyone, community of Salem, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, can we take a picture? Kenny took one?
All right, public comment. We have a fairly substantial list of folks signed up to make a public comment. I'll be calling out three names at a time. I'll try to keep it rolling so we can kind of move through this fairly rapidly. You have three minutes to speak. At two minutes, well, at the beginning, state your name and either your ward or your address. And then at two minutes, the yellow light will go on. At three minutes, just please stop talking, because I will ask you to, and you might as well not make me look really rude. So, it really is so that everybody gets a chance to speak. Barbara DiMaggio and Virginia Sawen, and Johanna. Barbara?
My name is Barbara DiMaggio. I am here to defend the books that are the property of Salem. I'm sure you heard from Mr. Hoy that there are two sides to every story when it comes to the library. I happen to be on the side of the books to be saved. Right now, five thousand books have been removed from the library in what's being referred to as the big weed-out, far above the percentages that are recommended by the state. Because I'm an old dinosaur of eighty, I like the old books, and I am very upset. They've removed sixteen Mark Twain's. To me, that's like the Bible. Seven Walt Whitmans, seven Thornton Wilders, a pilgrim's progress. Yet, they said that when I've gone in and asked questions, we're only keeping books published within the past five years. If that's the fact, then how come a 2018 book inside the White House was removed? It's on the list, it's been verified. So, they're still buying new books. This council directly oversees the library. Salem Library, the librarian and staff, report directly to Salem City Council. So I know who reports everything in the way of facts, and I know that they have to be approved. A little while back, someone at the desk told me that they did a survey, and they found that today's millennials are preferring contemporary books, and that is why they are removing them. The survey is skewed. When I go in the library and there are only contemporary books, I guess they put me down as someone who by wants contemporary, which is not a fact. For the uneducated people who don't go into the line, I shouldn't use the word uneducated, that was so wrong. For anyone who doesn't make the library part of their daily living. Contemporary to me means new authors, who are somewhat inexperienced in the field. They're first-time books, they don't have a lot of depth, most of them. And I end up taking four books out, returning three within two days, and maybe finding one that's readable. I know.
I'm sorry, your time's out. I'm sorry. Thank you. Virginia's? Oh, okay.
Yeah, one question if I could.
Sure.
I may have misheard you, but did you mention that the library is removing books that are five years old and older, and that will only have books that are less than five years old?
That's what someone at the desk told me when I asked the question of why the shelves were half-empty.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
You're going to need to go to the podium, not you. Person, people are lining up behind you. You bet. Virginia? Followed by Joe, and then Louise Nuswanger?
My name is Virginia Sawen. I am over on Hawthorne Street Northeast in the North Gate Park. I'm here to ask you to let your librarians do their job. I grew up in a county that just lost its county library in the last year due to budget cuts. The librarian that they'd had didn't do her job and weed the library collection. As a result, their library board had to deal with two hundred hardback Harlequin romances that nobody's read in ten years. They had to deal with VHS cassette tapes that were being used to create bookcases to store hundreds of audio cassettes that have not been used for years because it's obsolete material. I agree that we need a more rounded, well-organized, filled library, but we don't need things that are outdated, like Water Witchcrafting USA, ooh, let's go divine for water, when there are several other books that are available to make use of to look for water, oil, and other liquids that we might need. We also need to be allowed to have a say, and we are. If you go to a library advisory board meeting, you can have your say, you can make your suggestions. Some of what you will see online, on Facebook for the Save Our Books pages, they're saying there are books that are not available to us that are available in our library and through our cooperative library. There's a reason three counties get together to work for more books. It's a, we have a wider selection to get, to get, to read, to have some fun. And I also want to point out that your library staff is so good that three weeks ago, when I walked into the library with a Flat Stanley looking to take pictures and find a Flat Stanley book, your child librarian made sure I found the book I was looking for, and at the circulation desk, one of the librarians was willing to take a picture with Flat Stanley. These folks know their stuff. Let them do what they're paid to do, just like you let your police officers do what they're paid to do.
Thank you. Johannan, followed by Louise Nuswanger, and then Steve Anderson.
My name is Johannan. I am a bookperson. I live at thirty-five thirteen North Salem, thirty-three fifty, Thirteenth Street in northeast Salem. This is just what I want to say. It's, I understand that libraries need to cull. I think that that should be done regularly and not in a way that causes suspicion. The immense seeming loss of books hasn't been addressed in a clarifying way, and I think that that is something that should be addressed.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions? Okay. Louise, followed by Steve Anderson, followed by Kathleen Dewana.
I am Louise Nuswanger, a resident in Ward Eight and a member of the Library Advisory Board. The Library Advisory Board listened to the public comments at their January meeting and delayed a decision until the February meeting when additional comments were made by the public. There were comments on both sides of the issue at both meetings. We recognize that members of the OLA, Oregon Library Community, also took part, took their time to attend these meetings and support the work of the Salem Public Library in implementing the collection development policy. The Oregon Library Association and the American Library Association Office of Intellectual Freedom have also issued statements to support the work of the professional staff. Over the past several months, Salem Public Librarians met with individual lab members and also explained how this policy was implemented prior to the process being put on hold. Librarians also were available to meet with the public to answer their concerns. At the end of the February meeting, the lab voted unanimously to support the library administration's full implementation of the collection development policy, and voted unanimously on a second motion to record the number of books discarded and the reasons each of these items were discarded. Although this is a very time-consuming task, the professional librarians have been willing to tackle this and to be open and transparent at a time when there is a great deal of concern by some members of the public. Books from the core collection list were given a second look by staff. Many of these titles, removed for poor condition, had already been replaced or second copies were available. In addition, sometimes these titles were available in other formats, namely audiobooks or online versions available for download by library cardholders. Lab members did research and found sometimes misleading information on social media. And for example, a list of books withdrawn from the library collection was posted a few days ago. Yes, these titles were withdrawn, but I checked one page of this list, and of the twenty-eight titles listed on this one page, there were still copies of twelve of those titles in the Salem Public Library Collection, and several more titles available in CCRLS. Just because a book has been withdrawn does not mean that there aren't other copies available, and copies in poor repair are evaluated to see if they should be replaced or a newer edition purchased. Copies not available at Salem Public or in CCRLs are available via interlibrary loan. Lab is asking the city council to support the professional librarians in their jobs. To be noted that Salem Public Library offers many other services in addition to providing a vibrant book collection.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Steve Anderson, Kathleen Dewana, then Catherine Daniels.
Okay, Steve Anderson, thirty-two forty, Geller Road Northwest, Salem, Oregon. My testimony and exhibits are in your packet, but first I just want to thank councilors and the Congestion Relief Task Force and staff for the hard work they've done. Attachment one for six A talks about the recommendation to construct Marine Drive. On page two of that, it talks about actions for council, two choices. I'm here to recommend that the staff and council advise staff to proceed with the construction of Marine Drive and right-of-way allocation from Fifth Avenue to Herit Drive. The reasons for that are in my testimony, but basically, there's money to do it now, the choice is cost-effective, and it can be done right away versus the other solution along Wallace Marine Park. First, cost. It will cost eight point four eight million dollars to build that section versus twenty-three million dollars for what is in the current staff report. Using data from the staff report, this is a comparison comparison, apples to apples. Secondly, it's cost-effective. Eight point four million dollars is much less than twenty-three million dollars. And why? There's a three point four million dollar cost to construct the section along Wallace Marine Park. There's a four point eight million dollar cost in for the whole avenue interchange that is no longer needed, and there's a one point six million cost for Beckett Street, which does not have to be built now, it can be built when that area is developed. In addition to these three points, there's an east-side bicycle connection along Wallace Marine Park at one million dollars. Clearly, the eight point four million dollars is significantly less than twenty-three million dollars for the, versus the pathway alongside Wallace Marine Park. Third, it can be done right away. Currently, there's three point six million dollars in the bond money. There's nine point three seven nine that has been approved in two thousand and nineteen, February, for SDCs. The Marine Drive, the Fifth Street Road can be constructed reasonably in the next five years. Staff has repeatedly testified that the other alternative along Marine Drive would take ten years or more if then. So in conclusion, I give you four or five points why this is done and necessary to improve congestion and multimodal traffic in West Salem. And remember, it can be done now, there's money there, and it can be done right away, and it's cost-effective. So I recommend that you instruct staff to do option two and build Marine Drive from Fifth Avenue to Herit Drive.
Thank you. Yeah, Counselor Lewis.
Well, Steve, I guess my first question is, how would your proposal reduce congestion on Wallace Road?
I give you five points, but basically, it is the core for Marine Drive. It provides the connection between the business, West Salem Business District, and Harret Drive out to Wallace Road.
Okay. If, if your proposal of Marine Drive ends at Fifth Street and you're saying there's a connection between there and the business part of West Salem, east of Wallace Road, how do you get from Fifth Street to the business area?
If you look at this map, as you come in on Fifth Street, you can make a left turn on Taven and a right turn over to Glen Creek. It's not a direct connection, but it does bring you right by the Chariots bus station.
It is not a direct connection, you're right. And so you could either go through Ross Parking Lot, which I think some people do, others do take the, the street that the buses are on, which is really there for, for transit. That's what the Ross folks donated that property for.
Right.
So I'm still concerned that there is not going to be a relief on Wallace without the full build-out of Marine Drive from Glen Creek.
Well, I think that's a discussion that we've had, but I think in answering your question, this is for local access and circulation. The other alternative here along Wallace Marine Park is a regulatory and money sinkhole that, you know, it's costing over $4 million just to build that section where for half, twice that price, you can build a full Marine Drive.
If I'm not mistaken, the Marine Drive that's in the Salem Transportation Plan and has been there for 20 years is referred to as a collector's street, not a neighborhood street?
No, it's referred to as a local access and circulation street, not an arterial.
Okay, not according to the staff report that we're gonna be talking about later tonight.
We can go back to chapter and verse, Counselor.
Okay, great. Kathleen Dewanna.
Just one thing, may I step down?
Time's up, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Well, come to the West Salem Farmers Market starting next Thursday.
I just can't get there on Marine Drive. Kathy?
Kathleen Dewanna, 1045 Fifth Street Northeast. I have given a, put in the record a kind of comparative investment options and features, benefits and costs for the Glen Creek to Cameo proposal versus Glen Creek to Harret, purchasing the right-of-way. I hope you get a chance to look through some of those. The, establishing this backbone for local access provides a lot of benefits and, and potential for reducing congestion. It establishes routes through connecting streets such as Beckett, Hope, River Valley, and Harret, allowing access from areas west of Wallace Road to come down east of Wallace Road and get into the town center concept and our redevelopment plans without ever getting on Wallace Road. It establishes safe routes for entering Wallace Road southbound currently, for currently developed properties and future development. It will eliminate the need for the dangerous U-turns in high-speed traffic. It will consolidate accesses onto Wallace Road by eliminating many of those and reducing many to, to emergency only and right turn only. There's going to be resolving the conflicts that impede annexation of important land, which we need for multifamily development areas east of Wallace Road. That 15 acres of land in there that can be annexed and developed in multi-unit, high-density multi-unit could accommodate 420 dwelling units in a much-needed housing market. At $150,000 per dwelling unit, the tax increase, tax base increases 63 million. The revenue to local governments increases 630,000 per year. Real quick break even, 2.8 years, 31 months to, to recover the investment in Marine Drive for local access from tax revenues. Hope you get a chance to read and think about the rest. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Yeah, one short one.
Counselor Lewis?
I don't want to belabor the issue, but aren't those benefits that you mentioned, wouldn't they also be available to the city if we built Marine Drive based on the Salem Transportation Plan?
Marine Drive for local access and circulation is in the Salem, West Salem elements of the Transportation Systems Plan. The connection, the, the section of it, the direct connection through Fifth Avenue is the alternative to the Cameo connection, and this is much easier, much more direct. It has all of the elements that support the kind of connection that we want and need. And it's not gonna take the kind of time that the other one will or the political controversies over, over impeding, over invading the park and wetlands.
Thank you. Catherine Daniels.
Good evening. Catherine Daniels, 1662 Cottage Street Southeast in Salem. Just a note before I start, the input that was made to the various lab meetings on the Big Weed was overwhelmingly against the Big Weed. That's a much more accurate way to summarize that. Tonight's a critical night for you to consider the future of what remains of Salem's core book collection. You need only walk through the aisles of the library to see the many bare shelves. Almost half the books in the library's collection six years ago have been culled, and thousands more books are in danger of culling if the Big Weed is allowed to resume. I'd like to make two points tonight. One, the library's so-called collection development policy, as yet not adopted by city council, makes no mention of the Big Weed, a term discussed only in library staff meetings. Collection maintenance is the coyly worded and boldly misleading euphemism for book removal used in the online policy, which one might reasonably assume is intended to pull the wool over the public's eyes, as indeed it has, or you'd be hearing from more people tonight. The complete lack of transparency and actual obfuscation of such an extreme course of action as the further decimation of an already thin collection demands that the collection development policy be revised to include specific interpretation and standards created by city council. Two, those standards must include, first, a commitment to raise the ratio of library books from the current astonishingly low 1.6 books per capita to the average for public libraries in Oregon, which is two books per capita. And second, a commitment to cull no more than 5% of books annually, a standard that the library crew manual recommends and which the library claims to follow, but in fact does not. In conclusion, the current removal of books from our library appears to be a highly subjective process that cries out for the kind of objectivity and accountability that could be provided by clear standards established by city council. I urge you to do this and to end the Big Weed now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Cynthia Tyson, yeah, Tyson, Janet Baker, and Jim Shapki. Delena, you're not signed up. Do you wanna? Oh, you're on another sheet? Okay.
My name is Cynthia Thiessen. I retired a year ago this week as a senior reference librarian at Salem Public Library, ending a 50-year career in librarianship. I'm here to share my belief that the collection evaluation project underway at Salem Public Library represents a professionally and physically misguided project that needs to be reviewed and halted. The facts are clear. Books are being withdrawn at an alarming and unsustainable rate. The situation has produced two competing narratives. Members of the public are alarmed while library administration has defended current practices. They have offered inconsistent and changing stories to explain new excessively rigorous guidelines for discards. We're rightsizing the collection. There isn't enough room. This is deferred maintenance. And finally, where do the professionals trust us? There's an uncomfortable need to review this element of professional trust. Librarianship is one of the traditionally most trusted occupations, and the library is a beloved institution. Council members are forced to ask themselves, why would library administration do the wrong thing? My contention is that there's another party to hear from, and that is the professional selectors, me, on the floor of adult services who uniformly objected to current collection development standards. My experience was that I had autonomy to make collection decisions in principle, but in practice was forced to discard important literary works because they did not meet new, stricter circulation standards, regardless of if they were important classics, which the library should responsibly own and will have difficulty repurchasing. I am not alone among adult service professional librarians from Salem Public Library who believe the library leadership team is out of touch with the community and is sprinting toward the wrong goal. None have managed the adult nonfiction or fiction collection. None ever regularly worked the adult information desk, which has been sadly removed, to interact directly with the public and to gauge the public's interests. The worry is that creating a supermarket-style collection with possibly increased circulation statistics based on the number of checkouts per item housed in an expensive, physically beautiful space might be an attractive goal for library managers, that a superficially successful department, which has lost essential value for the taxpayers, would receive praise from the city council and management. I hope you will look more deeply.
Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Thiessen, for coming down, and I was also impressed by your use of the competing narrative. Kudos to bringing in literary terms for your testimony. I did have a question. So you just retired after?
50 years in librarianship.
So I would like to ask you some institutional knowledge that may not be readily available to this room or also with the staff report. So I understand that we talked, we heard in testimony, the library is almost like a church for some people, a house of worship. Library itself can be a religion for people. People take their library very seriously. But within the last five to 10 years, was a project ever done like this where people have gone through to evaluate the status of books, the collections? It was mentioned in the beginning, outdated texts.
There's been a hypothesis for the last five-plus years.
Has it ever been?
To reduce the collection by any means possible. I had a library director who walked through my Spanish collection and pulled a book off the shelf and said, "We've gotta get rid of this, it's a duplicate." Regardless of whether or not it was circulated or not, I pointed out that in fact, the covers looked similar, but it was actually a different book.
And that brings me to another question. I know when I served on lab, we had to deal with budget cuts and space. Quite frequently, these things can boil down to money. And I know we looked at the plastic covers that used to be around the paperback books.
Right.
That is no longer something that the library offers. I know that that was not an expense, given the space that, that we could maintain. Consequently, we knew from that point that books might retain some damage to the covers, but they were still maintained as part of the collection. Was that changed at all in your experience with this?
This was not an issue in the collections I managed. I was managing Oregon history, foreign languages, music CDs, religion, and literature. And the thing I was most concerned about was the literature collection, whereby you might have a book that is actually published this year, but the publication date will be five years ago. Okay? So if you're using a bot to evaluate your collection, you're not getting the librarian who actually knows the collection. I'm putting myself out there. I was 30 years married to a, to a very well-known poet, and I manage the poetry collection. So I could look at that collection and know which books were important and which were not. And I use my judgment.
Another question, Counselor?
Yes, just a couple more, I understand. Also, the nature of the collection that you managed, I understand from my visits to the library, not all books may be checked out, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they're not being used or consulted.
That was another question, something that mattered to me a lot, because I managed the religion collection, and one of my principles was that I needed, wanted to have a, every major Bible translation, okay? And that was just like what I thought the public wants, and they would come in and ask me. They would not necessarily check those books out. They were looking at their Bible translations in the library. They didn't circulate. Am I gonna throw away, you know, my, you know, my only translation of, you know, the Jerusalem Bible because it didn't check out for the last two and a half years, even though people have come in and looked at it? Who's gonna know that except for me, working at the information desk?
And we talked, oh, last one. We talked a lot about the accountability and the reporting system, how things move forward. A lot of testimony today has been, it's been discussed how we should support staff. How did you feel supported in this process? That's my last question.
The selectors have not been part of the narrative. I actually have a really specific idea, which would be, let's let the bot, which, you know, had only uses a couple of parameters to identify books that should be withdrawn, let's put a card down. City council can come and look over the shoulder of the selector and let this, and you can see what's going on. You don't want to get a report from this and that. If you look at the list of the books that are withdrawn, if one people say, "Oh, you know, that was the book that had the piece of bacon in it," right? But so if you don't come in and look and see what's going on at the level of selector, how are you going to know what to do?
Thank you very much. Janet Baker?
Hi, my name is Janet Baker, and I live in Ward Seven of the City of Salem. I was employed as a librarian from, for the City of Salem for 13 years. I recently resigned my position in January 2019. The main reason I resigned my position was, well, I consider decreasing the service levels of the library in the current direction of library management. I worked in the adult services department as a reference librarian and was part of the professional staff. My main duties included selecting the items, maintaining the collection, and withdrawing books from the collection. My concern tonight is different than the other people who have spoken before city council. Tonight, my concern, I believe, has a direct and indirect connection to the resolution before the council, Resolution 201911. And what my topic tonight is what I call the dumbing down of the library. In October 2018, the library limited the reference or information desk of the library. The staff was staffed by professional librarians and, within the last year, trained paraprofessionals from the adult services department. On the change, staff was given two weeks' notice before the change, and there was little or no training offered to other staff members, those staff members outside of the adult services department. Our new consolidated desk is staffed by student interns, on-call personnel, and circulation staff with little or no training. One of my colleagues graciously called the service level uneven. By that is meant that if a library patron came in and talked to a staff with training, expertise, and knowledge, they got good service. If they were helped by other staff member with little or no training, or perhaps even no interest in answering questions, they received, by I could saw, good to poor service. My second concern is directly in, in the Resolution 201911. The library is asking for a one-time appropriation transfer of $300,000 from the general fund personnel services to capital improvement funds. My question is, where did that money come from? I believe it is from unfilled professional staff positions in the City of Salem library. My adult services department had four professional staff in the last year leave our department. Cynthia Thiessen was one of our staff, our former person here. She left. A staff member left in October. A staff member, myself, left in the first of January, and another staff member left in the end of January 2019. As of April 1st of this year, two of those professional staff positions were filled, but still 1.5 FTE professional staff are unfilled.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just have one more comment. I hope that the city of, the council in the City of Salem will vote to support the library and vote no on the resolution of 201911. Thank you.
Jim, I'm gonna have Delena come, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Delana Beaton. I live at 1025 21st Street Northeast in Counselor Kaser's Ward. I feel passionately about the library issue personally, but that's not why I'm here. I'm here representing the rest of the NEN Board. that our 16-member board unanimously passed and endorsed at our last meeting. Address to Salem City Council, Mayor Bennett, City Saint Manager Powers, regarding the Salem Public Library book collection and its current maintenance policies. In response to recent concerns about policies managing the inventory of the collection of books with the Salem Public Library, we, the Board of Northeast Neighborhood Association, unanimously voted on April 16th to strongly urge your careful consideration of the following. Currently, library staff have been instructed to purge slash discard a very large number of books from the collection. This has led to a current collection maintaining significantly less than two books per capita, Information Source State Library of Oregon. Since many discarded books have been offered for sale on the library's retail outlet, citizens are aware that many art books, poetry books, history books, geography books have been eliminated. Some of these are considered rare, others are certainly considered classics, others are considered basic reference materials. Even a casual observer now notices large open spaces on the shelves and the stacks of the library. Could the removed books be warehoused and perhaps made available to smaller city neighborhood libraries, which could be established? In that way, the citizens of Salem would have views of the full collection just being offered in other locations. At a time of very tight city budgets, it will be very difficult to replace these lost books. If the goal is to reduce the collection, to make renovation work easier, could the purged books be stored off-site to be replaced in the collection later? We hope to encourage protection and retention of a fine collection. Of course, as has always been the case, seriously soiled or damaged books would need to be removed. But in the past, this normal process of maintaining the quality of the collection has not led to a dramatic reduction of total books. We stand as advocates for the preservation of a robust, well-balanced collection and express our thought that the removal of books from the Salem library should be stopped at the level of the current purge.
Thank you. Any questions, okay? Jim Shepke, followed by Ellen Stevens, followed by Eleanor Berry.
Thank you. Mayor, City Council, Jim Shepke, Ward Two. I have two things to say about Agenda Item 6H, the library collection development policy. Number one, as you sit here tonight, there is no collection development policy in place that has been approved by the Salem City Council in accordance with Salem Revised Code 18.050, which grants sole powers to make policy for our library to the Salem City Council. So there is no policy in place tonight. Please ask your city attorney about this. According to our code, the library advisory board and the library's staff have no power to make policy, none. They can only recommend policies to be approved by the council. At your meeting last year on August 27th, you were shown the policy under discussion tonight as information only. You never approved it. So tonight, there is no policy in place, and the plan before you to implement it is not legitimate for this reason, and it must not go forward. Point number two, you were provided with lots to read in the staff report and attachments, but the most important facts were omitted. Here they are. At present, our library has a book collection of approximately 1.6 books per capita. Write that down if you're taking notes. That is well below the average for public libraries in the state of Oregon of two books per capita. And by the way, you'll hear from the president of the Oregon Library Association in a minute. I looked it up, and her library has seven books per capita. If you take the top 29 libraries in Oregon that serve more than 20,000 people, only five libraries have smaller collections per capita than our library does. The reason for this is that in the past five years, our library collection has seen massive discards, averaging 10% of the collection per year. The professional guideline in something called the crew manual is 5% per year, but we've been discarding twice that. So to embark now on massive removal projects like the one that was suspended in December is wrong. Our collection is already too small. Those are the facts you need to know. You should not allow the further removal of books. We need to grow our collection now, not shrink it. And you, as a council, need to approve a collection development policy in accordance with SRC 18.050. And I want to end by saying that at the Friends Book Sale, I rescued eight poetry books at a cost of, or eight poetry books at a cost of $7 for those eight hardback poetry books in great condition, and I'm donating them back to the library. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions? Ellen Stevens, Eleanor Berry, and Ray Quisenberry.
Good evening. Ellen Stevens, Ward Two. Last week, Salem's online newspaper, The Salem Reporter, published a five-part series on the elementary schools in Salem. Rachel Alexander's extensive reporting featured schools where sadly, less than half of the children cannot pass the state reading test. Many of these children live in East Salem, miles from the library, and most likely never visited a library before attending public kindergarten. As a community, we need to be talking about how to grow our library services and accessibility rather than shrinking them. If we continue to discard thousands of books, it will be much more difficult to stock a much-needed branch library in East or South Salem.
Thank you very much. Eleanor Berry, Ray Quisenberry, and Zachary. Zachary, I can't read your last name. I apologize.
Eleanor Berry from far east Marion County. Why am I here for the second council meeting in a row? Because I think it's important to preserve the cultural resources of this city, Oregon's state capital, for its residents and for those who, like me, live in the surrounding area and come to it for those cultural resources. The books in the Salem Public Library are an important cultural resource, and they should be treated as such. In the big weed carried on from last October until it was temporarily suspended, they were treated more like commodities with brief shelf lives. This way of considering them is especially damaging when applied to literature and the other arts. These are works that may be ahead of their time or even timeless. In any case, their value cannot be determined by their date or their circulation over a limited period. It isn't enough in the public library for Oregon's state capital, in the principal library of the Chameca de Regional System, for users to be able to obtain books from another system library or by interlibrary loan. They need to be on the shelves to be discovered in browsing. Aggressive weeding has been especially damaging for poetry, drama, and creative nonfiction. The fact that these books have relatively low circulation rates has meant that a relatively high number of them have been removed. Because the acquisition budget for various areas of the collection is apportioned according to their rates of circulation, the amount available for acquiring replacement and new books of poetry, drama, and creative nonfiction is relatively low. The library administration's current approach seems to be focused on bringing in new users by stocking popular materials with high turnover rates. This is short-sighted. Heavy users, regular borrowers of books are the mainstay of a library, and the administration should be working to maintain and enlarge this cluster of users, which can only be done...
Thank you very much.
... with an ample and deep collection. Thank you.
Ray, Zachary?
My name is Ray Quisenberry, and I live in Ward One. And I love the library, but I'm going to change subject for just a moment here. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of 350 Salem, the local climate action group, and I want to thank the city's legislative committee for recommending that the city endorse House Bill 2020, the Clean Energy Jobs Bill. 350 Salem would also like to strongly encourage the city council to endorse this legislation. The Clean Energy Jobs Bill would complement our own climate action plan that we're developing here in Salem. And both elements, from the state and from the city, are critical in building a clean, healthy future for Salem and everyone that lives here, and everyone that we care about, no matter where they live. Thank you, and happy Earth Day, everybody.
Thank you, Ray. Zachary? Esther Moberg?
Sorry, I haven't prepared anything, so I might ramble a little bit. My name is Zachary Cardoso. I am from Ward Two. I'm here in defense of the library. I think that the actions that the library are currently taking are healthy and responsible actions for our community at large. I think that a lot that's been neglected in the talkings about the current library practices are representative of our entire community. A lot of them focus on individuals and individual stories and personal opinions and not on the reflect, or the reflective data that is shown in our circulation information. I think that a lot of what we have seen in regards to the library is focusing on things that have been removed and not things that still remain, including programming. One of the testimonies that you see has a table in it that shows that Salem has fewer books than some other libraries, but it also has more attendees in their programs. And I think that that's an important thing to note. And that a lot of these books, this has been said before, but a lot of the books on the removed list, yes, a copy has been removed, but those are still available to the Salem Public for free via CCRLS or ILL book checkouts, which certainly do take time, and there are barriers to that, especially for people with low socioeconomic standing. And those are things that I think also need to be addressed. The lack of staff is a thing that needs to be addressed, but that's a different issue. I think that this debate is about caring for the library and what our citizens have and what's accessible to them, but there are things that people complain about that I think, although their own personal opinions are valid and important, they neglect trends in our society as well as the future proliferation of our library and its content. I've been to every single lab meeting that has happened since this has happened to give testimony. The lab has heard a lot of what citizens are saying, and I fully agree with their recommendation to continue the practices in the library. And my last point that I want to make, I don't think it's good to point out other people's arguments, but so many of the arguments made by the Save Our Books campaign have been misinformed, misguided, and very alarmist in nature. And I think that you should look at the, you should certainly look at all of the arguments being presented, but look in depth at them, look past what is being said towards the information they're looking at. I've gone back to the Oregon Library reports to 2003, and there was a time when it would appear that no books were removed from the library for a period of years. So please look further into this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Esther Moberg, and Tom?
My name is Esther Moberg, and I am the current Oregon Library Association president, and I live in Seaside, Oregon. I am here tonight in support of the Salem Public Library staff and the library advisory board. I think they're doing an amazing job moving the library forward in the right direction. I understand there's a lot of passion behind our books. Everyone loves books, and there are certain ones. In the weeding things, it says, "Be careful when you weed poetry and religion because those are sacred cows," and that is most certainly true. Unfortunately for Sarah, she came in, and this was the first collection she started to weed, and of course, now she's hearing a lot back on that. The staff at the Salem Public Library are doing a very thorough job of looking at each book. There is mention of bots. We do run reports. This is very standard of libraries. We run reports, but then we also take a look at them as selectors, and we also use our professional opinions to evaluate whether an item is a certain age and whether it should be removed at that time, or if it's something that is irreplaceable and should be kept in the collection. These are things that we do, we do as a regular thing all across Oregon. People are, all the libraries are weeding very regularly. There have been some very extensive weedings going on across the state. Not all of them have been as publicized as the Salem library. And I, like I said, I am here in support. I did write a letter statement that's in the packet with the American Library Association Office of Intellectual Freedom. We do think the library is moving in the right direction, but I do understand there's a lot of passion behind books and removal of books. There always is. And like one of your counselors said, our hearts are always there, and you can see the passion there, and we're really on the same side. We all are. We love our books, but it's just a different viewpoint on where the library is going, what directions I should take. There's so many services the library provides, whether it's eBooks, which haven't even been mentioned, there is an eBook collection, whether it's paper books. I personally love paper books with all my heart, but it's a question of that balance within your library, and that's really the focus that you guys are hearing about is those books that are being removed for whatever reason and looking at that.
Thank you. I'm just curious, is 25% of the population use of the library fairly standard statewide?
It varies all across the state. It really does. I mean, Mr. Shepke mentioned my library. We actually have a higher usage in my town.
Yeah.
But we do know for a fact that when collections are refreshed and updated, it actually does make more higher circulation. It's a fact. So if you do refresh, even if it's removing items and bringing in new items, you usually see higher numbers afterward.
And statewide, did I understand that the average is 5% and we're doing 10%? Or I'm not sure. I've seen 30%.
You know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of numbers figured, you know, thrown around. You could, you could go library by library. You could look at the closest numbers, you know, population size to get a sense of which libraries. But honestly, each community is different. How each, how each community uses the library is different. You may have, you know, a larger Polynesian group here in this, in this community that may be using your library for those specific materials, so you should probably have a bigger collection for that. You know, so each, each one is different. You could look at those standardized numbers and say, but I know Salem Public Library has actually been doing a report, looking at who uses the library and why, because they are trying to drive those numbers up. They're not just trying to remove books and deplete them and push people away. That is not their intent.
Counselor Andrews?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One question that probably just shows my ignorance. People are talking about bots. The only thing I know about bots is that's supposedly what the Russians were doing to interfere with our election.
I think what they're referring to is we usually run reports in libraries. So we run a report that says, a book that's been on the shelf, if it hasn't been touched in five years, which titles are those? And then we go and look at those titles.
And so does bots, is that an acronym that stands for something?
I don't know specific to the Salem Public Library, but I think they're talking about library reports. We all have library automation systems that help us. They're just a tool. So we usually, at my library, run a report to say every five years, which books have not been touched for the last five years. But no library in the entire state would remove all books older than five years. That's just not true.
And I guess a follow-up question to what you just said. You look at... You look at books, which books haven't been used in the last five years, and is that a criteria that you then use to decide whether you should retain that book or weed out that book?
It's just one of many tools.
One of many, okay.
I mean, that's just the starting point, and all libraries do this. We have at least six criteria all libraries go through, where it's like, is it, you know, they've talked about, well, it's beat up and ugly and has bacon in it, but then it's also, has it been used? Because we do want books to be used.
Well, I have no doubt that your library and our library use very sophisticated methods of figuring out things more than just one thing. Now, my last question, though, relates, I think, again, to different communities are different, and I wonder if you could comment on if, in fact, you have seven books per capita and Salem has 1.6 in the averages, too?
That is correct. However, my library is for a very tiny population. We only have 6,500 people, so it's very easy for us to have seven books per capita because we have very few people in our community. There's one town in Oregon that's Agnes, is 170 that they're serving.
There's only about 50.
So it's very easy for them to get that many books per capita. Salem has a good-sized collection, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Counselor Kaser?
Thank you. Thanks for coming hours away to give testimony as well. You said other communities have a collection policy similar to Salem. Do you have an example of what this could be?
Well, I think I mentioned, like, weeding. I know for a fact Redmond just did a very big weed recently. Not the same-sized population, of course, as Salem, but other libraries across the state have mentioned to me they've also done some extensive weeding. Some have had people come out and, you know, complain about it. Others, nobody's even noticed because they do it fairly regularly or for a specific reason, like which is happening here.
And then I have one last question, and that's, how does this method, I guess, collection policy differ from perhaps past methodologies for library collection?
I think it's just honestly a refresh, in my opinion. You know, it's looking, every library does this. We look at our policies, we look at what the criteria for our community needs are, and then we try to shape a policy around it. And that is done with the advising of the Library Advisory Board, you know? So it's not just one person sitting at a desk alone thinking, huh, I think I'll remove all the books in the collection. You know, it's shaped around the needs of the community and trying to encompass all those needs, and it's not focused on just one people group, one age group. It's trying hopefully to reach everybody.
All right. Thank you.
Counselor Boy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Going back to something you said earlier, you talked about religion and poetry or books that you have to be really careful about when you're looking to weed. So if you were sitting in our chairs or if you were at the library in here, how would you balance that, or what recommendations would you make to balance that? The need to weed and the need to honor people's passion about those kinds of books? How would you do that?
It's a very delicate balancing act, and I totally feel for you because, yes, there's going to be people that want none of the poetry books removed ever, but then there's also the view, which is fairly modern library science now, is we look at this collection, and some of these are being used in house, some are never touched, but some are, you know, the poet laureate of Oregon, so of course we're going to keep that. So you have to look at that as a whole and say, we still have to be able to remove some of this collection to update and bring in more authors, but there is a part of that collection we're going to keep forever, even if it circulates very little. But there's a balance there, and some of those titles, they get old and grungy, and you replace them with a newer copy of the same. So you keep the collection looking fresh, even if it's the same titles. Yeah. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I do have a question, Ms. Moby, and thank you for coming down tonight to give your testimony. So you've mentioned several times now that if a book's not been touched, if a book's not been touched, but I can't help thinking, as a library patron, the way that you would be tracking that based on survey data would be an actual checkout of that book matched with a library card.
So we actually do that. It's called in-house use. It's not with a library card, though, and Salem has turned this on, I know that, where if a book is put off the shelf, you know, it's been used, it's pulled off the shelf, and it's laying there, staff track it. They scan it, and that's an in-house use.
So if your staff level was cut and you did not have a very specified skill set of staff, if you also had a lot of generalists working to peruse this data, that in-house use would be more difficult to track as far as re-shelving, especially with volunteers?
No.
So you're saying that every-
Volunteers could do this as well.
So you're saying, okay, I just want to be clear, when we're talking about touches, that it's not just the checking out, that you're also saying if someone comes in and uses a book and doesn't check it out, that that's included in the five-year data?
Yes. In my library, we've tracked that for decades.
Thank you.
Okay, Tom Rush. Thank you very much.
Thank you. My name is Tom Rousch. I live at 1070 15th Street in Salem and am a lifelong Salem resident. I want to thank the council and the mayor for hearing us today. I want to say, first of all, that no one respects the work of librarians more than I do. I've worked for libraries several years of my life, several years right here in this very library, and I know what they do, and I've patronized libraries all my life, and I have the utmost respect for librarians, library science, and libraries themselves. What I'd like to do, though, is ask you to look at the reality and not the rhetoric, because you hear a lot of things in this testimony, but I ask you just to go across the hall there and look at the library. Look at the shelves. Look at what we have and what we, try to remember what we used to have, because you'll see in your own memory, things look a lot different. There's a false dichotomy that we're hearing about of the standard operating procedure of judiciously cultivating a collection versus weeding. That's, nobody is talking against judiciously cultivating the collection. Everybody knows who loves books, books have to go, and books get recycled in. Nobody's talking about that. What we're talking about is injudicious decimation, really. Hard numbers, the collection is shrinking. We're nevertheless reducing the space we do have for books. The reality is that the core collection that opens our minds and touches our hearts are being more than decimated, literally decimated. We are losing books that we have no money to replace, and the librarian has no will to replace. At a time of budget cuts, we are throwing away, literally throwing away, money. The rhetoric is that they toss only books that are obsolete or in poor condition. The reality is that many books that are weeded are in fine condition, and obsolete is a subjective term at best. As you listen to the rhetoric, remember the reality is that no taxpayer wants fewer books in their library, and the reality is that fewer books is exactly what we are getting. I urge you, city council, to adopt a policy that grows the collection and doesn't reduce it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay. Linda Beerly?
I love this city. People pack the council to fight for their books. Anyways, I'm not here to do that. I'm here to fight for the park. So this is about the congestion relief task force, and I am here to ask you to choose the option that says, direct staff to provide alternatives to right-of-way acquisition and construction. I hope that you don't build Marine Drive. So Marine Drive would go right through between Pioneer Village and Wallace Marine Park. It will cause environmental damage. It will cause damage to a very quiet neighborhood. That neighborhood that is bordered, Pioneer Village, the apartments that live there. I used to advocate for the 5th Street choice, you know, it might make things a little bit better, but a friend of mine that actually lives there said, you know, this is a neighborhood of walkers and wheelchairs and scooters, and she said, we need so much, a quiet place. We don't need a collector's street right through the middle. And I respect that. So now I'm just hoping that you won't build Marine Drive either. When all those developments went in alongside Wallace Road, we, and I remember Kathy Dewana and Steve Anderson here in front of both the Planning Commission and City Council, asking about the impacts to traffic on Wallace Road, and we were assured each time that there wasn't going to be any difference. Those developments weren't going to make a difference to the traffic on Wallace Road. And so now, it seems odd to me that they want to build Marine Drive to relieve congestion, because there must not be any congestion, right? Those developments weren't going to make a difference. So the other thing is, I think that though people that live in those apartments do need a safe place to get onto Wallace Road, think about more traffic signals, think about utilizing Doakes Ferry Road. Doakes Ferry Road was built as a road to take a lot of traffic, and it also could connect to Highway 22, giving you an outlet. So we need a traffic signals on Wallace Road, traffic signal where Doakes Ferry Road connects with Highway 22, and I put it in my written testimony, so I hope you read that, because I'm about out of time. But thank you for considering the no-build option. I think it would do a much better job for the environment and for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, by the way, I live in Ward 8. Counselor Lewis is my counselor. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Is Genevieve Sheridan here? I saw her earlier.
Nope.
Okay. All right.
She's here.
Is she here? Where'd she go? There you are. I was looking for you. Come on up. Go on down.
Thank you. I'm actually here tonight to talk about my project. So I'm Genevieve Sheridan. I'm the executive director of Merit, Micro Enterprise Resources Initiatives and Training. I live in Ward 1, and I work in Ward 5. Merit is now located at 2640 Portland Road Northeast, thanks to the city council, and I appreciate your support. We have embarked on the beginnings of a food hub, and we have done some test marketing with food trucks. We now have a criteria from these trucks that were our founders for additional upgrades specifically for the trucks to be located there permanently, and the city has been doing many repairs. Thank you for that. We have heat, electricity, water, functioning water faucets. And I learned on Friday afternoon that Merit has been awarded a grant from Business Oregon, a High Impact Opportunity Project Grant, to do a feasibility study and create a market feasibility plan to determine the economic viability of a food hub at this location. We received letters of support from Engrab and SEDCOR. Highly appreciate that. And in addition, we were awarded another grant in previous months that allowed us to hire a new employee for a newly created position called Director of Program Services. Our new director is Francisco Garcia, and he's here with me tonight. He is a PhD candidate at the University of Portland and has experience in workforce development, and was a teacher for many years in his hometown of Porterville, California. I wanted to give you this update to let you know that we are working hard, and we are hosting not only our own classes, but community meetings, and we look forward to hosting more events on site. And we look forward to continuing to work with the city to improve the neighborhood.
Right. Congratulations. That's just great. Genevieve? Got something new to say? Come on down, Mark. Have we heard this before?
Well, I'm Mark Wig, 1950 Saginaw Street South, and you dropped me down. Sorry. And so Marine Drive is on the thing tonight, and what is proposed right now by the staff is to build this section down here, which already has really good circulation down there. Adding, spending $3 million or $4 million to build this section provides no additional utility. They have good circulation. The, 11 years ago, the city, the citizens gave the city the right $3.5 million, $3.2 million, to do something for Marine Drive. And this is just, it's like an insult to the people of West Salem, because it doesn't help the people of West Salem. You could build a lot of this section of Marine Drive and get the right-of-way, and that would help people. The one thing, when you do build Marine Drive, that I would request is that think about making that multi-use path into a promenade. Make it beautiful. Line both sides with trees. Make it wider than what you would think, eight foot or 10 foot. Make it 12-foot wide. Make it a promenade. People will be walking up and down it, walking their strollers. You won't have the conflict with the bikes and that kind of thing. It becomes an attraction in itself if you do it right. Make it beautiful. You'll attract people. You will reduce the congestion on walks.
Thank you. Be sure to come for the CIP when this actually comes up, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's it. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move ahead then. Consent calendar. Want to move the consent calendar?
Yeah. I'm sorry. I'm trying to find my notes.
Are you looking for something?
I move approval of the consent calendar with the following polls. 3.1B by Counselor Nanki, 3.3A by Counselor Hoy, and 3.3B by Counselor Lewis. And the consent calendar includes-
Not much left.
I'm sorry?
Not much left.
Not much left after all those polls. 3.1A is the, would be the draft city council minutes for the April 8, 2019 meeting. 3.2A is a transfer of appropriation for Salem Public Library technology improvements. 3.2B, a transfer of appropriation authority for the purpose of paying an appellate attorney fees award.
What was Nanki polling?
Nanki was polling 3.1B, the draft city council work session minutes.
Okay.
And that concludes the consent calendar.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We will go to special orders of business then. Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regards to the draft city council work session minutes-
Yes.
-I would move the minutes as presented with the change on the second motion. I was a no vote, and the report listed unanimous with ayes and no nays.
I was gone.
So-
I second.
You second that? Senator seconds you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move staff recommendation on item 3.3A, readoption of utility assistance programs.
Second.
Second, my Liz. Go ahead.
Thank you. I wanted to pull this just to, first of all, thank the staff for their great work on this proposal. I am very pleased with the outcome. I had a lot of great conversations, and we had input from members of the community, and I really wanted to thank Mr. Fernandez and his staff for all their great work on this. So pulled it. Also, Counselor Anderson had mentioned that he wanted to talk about it as well, so I think I'll stop right there.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I concur with fellow Counselor Hoy about the great job, and I really, I wanted to have this pull just to bring some more publicity to it, that this is something that the city staff and the city council is doing to help folks who are having problems with their utility bills. And I don't have it in front of me, but if I recall, I think it increased the threshold from 30% to 60%, so that's a whole lot of more people who can take advantage of this program. And I also think it increased from $30,000 to a quarter of a million dollars, the funds that we are willing to sort of absorb from our city general fund, but no, the utility budget or some other budget. Yeah. It's all money. That the city is willing to absorb in order to help these folks. So I think this is a terrific program, and I agree with Counselor Hoy that Public Works and the utility folks should be congratulated for this, and I really hope the people in the public know this and can take advantage of it. I want to see us get up to that $250 million. Thanks.
Thousand.
$250,000, yeah. Million. Why not? As I said, it's only money.
It's only money. Yeah, I, I want to- Yeah, I, I want to follow up on the counselors' discussion, Mr. Fernandez, just to make sure I understand how you're going to publicize this, to make sure that we do reach the goal that Councilor Anderson outlined.
Yeah, so I think our, Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director, we engaged the Mid-Wilhelamid Valley Community Action Agency as one of our partners. They tell us that we'll have no problem hitting the $250,000 max cap that we have on here with the new threshold and with the people that they know are in need. They're going to be one of our, one of the agencies that we use to qualify people. So, I had an earlier thought that we would widely advertise this, but our advisors are telling us that we're going to fill this, we're going to expend all of our monies here pretty quickly. So, if we see good use, that'll be that. If we implement over a few months and we have capacity, then we'll try and put the word out in a variety of ways to let folks know that this is available.
Do we do it through our Housing Authority as well? You won't let people...
No, the Housing Authority...
Has its own program?
Yes, they are not allowed to use this program.
So, if you combined our programs for assistance...
A lot of people are being helped.
A lot of people? Okay, great. Counselor Lewis.
Yeah, real quick, I want to echo what I've heard from the other counselors and the mayor. I really appreciate the work that the Public Works Director has put into this. The only thing that wasn't mentioned was that we currently serve about 250 residents. We will go to 1,765 residents. This other comment I'd like to make is, I sure hope this is something that, in a positive way, reaches the social media folks.
Sure. Did you want to call on the social media folks too?
No, actually, I wanted to actually recognize staff for moving this forward as well. We had a system that was minimally serving the community, and I think it was two years ago, we finally had a shift in the Water Waste Water Task Force, and finally approved moving that up, or advising staff that we would be supportive of a move forward in that, and it looks like we're taking that another step further as well. So, as finances become more and more difficult for people, there's more and more that we'll be needing that service, and it's nice to see that staff has moved that line a little bit to catch a couple more.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Mayor. If I may, so this was a response when we did the rate proposal last fall, council adopted the rates and said, and you're going to come back with this, right? And so, we said, yeah, we'll be back in April, and we made the, we made the last meeting in April to be able to provide this to you. I want to acknowledge Alicia Blaylock...
Check that box.
Yes, sir. I want to acknowledge Alicia Blaylock, our Administration Division Manager, and Margo Williams, sitting next to her, who's our Customer Service Manager, and the two of them worked, did all of the work on this effort and brought it to fruition. So, my thanks to them.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, Mr. Fernandez just stole my thunder. I was going to actually call them out as well, because I had great meetings with them and got really detailed information. I also just wanted to mention, one of the things that I learned during one of the meetings is that we actually can sign up for paperless billing on our utility bill. I did not know that, and I did that. Actually, we did it right during our meeting, and now I get a paperless bill, and I really appreciate that. So, if people aren't aware of that, that is available to you via the City of Salem website.
Very good. Wow.
Saves us money.
Sounds like you should be forming that Friends of Public Works along here somewhere.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Counselor Lewis.
Okay, I don't have a motion directly, but I have a couple of questions that might lead to it.
Why don't you make a motion first?
Okay, I'll move staff recommendation.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Hoy. Go ahead, Counselor Lewis.
Couple of things that I found odd with this report. Attachment A, which we are used to seeing, shows three bills that the committee chose to oppose and at the priority rates. Also included in the staff report is comments about House Bill 2020. It appears to me that even though it doesn't appear in the normal format, that the Legislative Committee is recommending supporting House Bill 2020 and ask the City Council to do that. If that is the case, I'm kind of curious why it isn't in the normal format. And secondly, I would have to register a no vote on that part of the recommendations from the committee.
I apologize, Counselor. I don't know why it's not in the standard format, but I believe the recommendation was to support 2020, and the other recommendations were as you described them.
Okay. And then my second issue, this is not listed in the staff report, but I believe that the Legislative Committee did get a review of House Bill 2974, which is the Bridge District. And I'm curious why there was no recommendation on House Bill 2974, and if that's something that has been dropped, or are we going to be reviewing it later? That's my question.
I thought, I thought we endorsed it, but I don't remember, frankly. Do you remember?
I don't, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't recall taking the actual position, because we had understood the bill to be dead.
Yeah, I think that was it. I think it was a, the analysis we got from the folks that keep track of this stuff was that the bill was not moving forward.
Well, I know that it had a hearing, so it has made the first cut. Whether the, whether the bill was viable from the very beginning, I'm not going to debate. But if it's still on the, on the agenda, well, I would like to see this, at least the City Council make a decision on it, and therefore, I move that the city support House Bill 2974.
I know. Do you have a second?
Second. Yeah, okay. We'll vote on that one first, and then we'll vote on your first motion again. Okay. It's a sub, you guys ready? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Counselor Lewis has also moved the...
Moved the staff recommendation with a personal no vote on, at this point, supporting House Bill 2020.
But you already voted no.
I will, yes.
You want to vote no again?
Yeah.
You want to be sure they understand you're a no on this one?
I hope so.
You just registering as no vote on HB 2020, and I would like to do similar.
You just had a chance to, or no, 2020. I apologize.
Right.
Yeah, I got confused. Okay.
And if I could just speak a second to why I think it may be different is because HB 2020 is still a moving target...
Right.
And the conversation that took place at the Legislative Committee meeting was that we won't necessarily know what amendments will be in there, but I think it was Counselor Anderson who suggested that none of them will impact it to such an extent that someone in council wouldn't support it in its final form. And so, it was more of a general supportedness of kind of the base concept and it moving forward, even though we can't write, and this is exactly what it does...
Right.
Because we don't know exactly what it does.
I think they said there's a stack of like 60 amendments or something like that. Go ahead, Counselor Anderson.
And I also think that, I agree that we made a statement of general support of the bill, and we asked to have it come back as different amendments were proposed and as the bill took further shape.
Yeah.
But we endorse the general concept of the, of the cap and trade.
Would you like to have this bill come back to you in case you'd like to change your vote to yes? Would you like...
I don't think I would ever do that.
Just wanted to make sure.
It's kind of the opposite perspective. I don't think they could do anything to make it to where I could support it.
Counselor Case.
Thanks. Can you please clarify the motion?
The motion is to the staff recommendation, which are the bills that you're seeing in front of you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the opposition votes on 2020 are noted, right? Okay. Motion passes. Lots of good information.
And staff is prepared to answer questions. We have some additional information ready for slides if council would like to spend additional time on any of the information reports.
Heard a lot of testimony on Marine Drive. Is that the congestion relief task force that we were hearing about?
Yes.
Okay. What are you doing, Peter? What's...
No, I think he's, I think he's talking to me, Counselor Lewis.
Oh, okay.
Well, you know, the Marine Drive, construct Marine Drive is one of the recommendations of the congestion task force. The, there is a segment that's been in the construction budget that has been on hold for the last couple of years, based on council direction. We are reanalyzing the budget for that construction, and we feel that now there's probably not enough money to build that segment of road, primarily due to right-of-way acquisition constraints. So, I forget what are... Yeah, so that the, the next steps that we have on the action plan, and that's there on page two of 15, is to, we recommend just proceeding with the right-of-way acquisition of that first segment, and then in the future, we'll look for more direction from, from council as we, as we initiate that effort.
Okay. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to clarify, Mr. Fernandez, we're not actually, you're not actually asking us for a decision on any of those items in that, in that report tonight, are you? No, we are not. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Anderson.
Well, I have a question about it, and that is the right-of-way construction, and I'm looking at page two, where next step for city staff is unless otherwise directed by council, recommend proceeding with right-of-way acquisition of the segment of Marine Drive between Glen Creek Road and Cameo Street. So, I think you're asking for direction from us, and I don't know if tonight, I'm looking at the city attorney, is tonight the time to do that, or is it some other time?
This, this subject will come more clearly in the CIP, and you can provide direction of that.
Because as I look at this, Director Fernandez, it seems to me that the segment of Marine Drive between Glen Creek Road and Cameo Street is the segment that goes to the east of Pioneer Village and between Wallace Marine Park and Pioneer Village. And I don't see what the vote that the council took against the Salem River Crossing that that is needed. And so, to my way of thinking, and we can talk about it in capital improvement plans, the Marine Drive right-of-way that we should be acquiring is, is north of there and potentially including the Fifth Street, I'll just call it the Fifth Street cutoff. So, at some point, we don't have to look at it tonight, but I think we will need to look at that at the capital improvement plan. Then I have one other question too.
Okay.
I'm just curious as to system development charges and how any transportation system development charges could or would be used for the Marine Drive, and that would be north up to Riverbend. And would that be contingent upon development where the developers might do it, or is that could, would that also be something that we could take from the general SDC transportation funds?
Well, the money would have to be, the street is eligible for SDC funds, so the funds for its construction would have to be allocated as part of the, of the budget process. Again, as part of the CIP or part of the construction.
So, all this we could, we'll deal with in the CIP when that...
That's correct.
Correct. Thanks.
Counselor Case.
Thank you. I had a question about Marine Drive. So, I was reading in the transportation system plan, in section 3-24, and there's a, it talks about Marine Drive and constructing it, and then it says, "An alternate alignment that extends Fifth Avenue Northwest, northward along the UGB should be built if there are difficulties in constructing the preferred eastern alignment along Wallace Marine Park." And then there's a map that kind of, and we've seen that before, where it kind of shows coming off of Fifth, and then it connects up to Marine Drive north of Fifth Street. Is the plan then to build both of those connections eventually?
Right.
The one at Cameo extending and then the one at Fifth extending?
Right.
Okay, to build both of those. So, it's really the discussion is about which one do you acquire right-of-way first? Construct first.
Well, so, so, just a couple of, if I may, just a couple of quick items. Marine Drive is, is and has been adopted in the transportation system plan as a collector street for 20 years. When the November 2008 bond issue passed, there was money allocated for right-of-way acquisition of some, either for supporting a third bridge or for doing something with, with Marine Drive. Issues with Marine Drive, so we want to, just based on what the adopted plan says, the idea is to build all of Marine Drive from Riverbend Road down to, and with, and with the access points and the access points that connected to Wallace Road. There are pieces, because that's an adopted roadway, there are pieces that are already acquired, there's actually already pieces that are built where, where there has been development. So, so, in terms of acquiring right-of-way, we can acquire, you know, pending council direction, we can acquire right-of-way. We have an alignment, so we can acquire right-of-way throughout all of that area. The piece between Glen Creek and Cameo, there's more design to that, so there's more, there's a better understanding of the exact locations for what right-of-way to be acquired, but really, that $3.6 million and any other SDC funds that weren't applied to it can be applied to any of the right-of-way. There is a continuing problem with Marine Drive in that there are two big pieces that are outside of the urban growth boundary. And, and we've had this discussion before at the council, so this piece just north of Cameo, north of the, of the run of the, of the houses there, there's a big piece that's outside of the right, of the UGB, and there's a big piece to the north towards Riverbend Road that's outside of the UGB. That UGB amendment was in the, the changes that the council had adopted that were then sent to Luba. So, with no more action taken for that, those UGB amendments need to be reintroduced if we want to build Marine Drive. So, we can acquire the right-of-way, but there's no construction of Marine Drive in those sections until we bring it into the UGB. And that's kind of the continuing issue for, for Marine Drive. And we've understood that it always was an issue.
So, I could just summarize really quick so I understand what you're saying, is we can't acquire right-of-way wherever along Marine Drive, because we've, I'm guessing we aligned it, we know...
Right, we have some idea of where the line is, yes.
But that piece between Glen Creek and Cameo is the most designed as far as...
Correct.
Exactly where it would be, but it doesn't mean, it doesn't exclude other pieces.
No, we can...
Perhaps maybe just those, those outside the UGB, because we haven't amended that.
Right. We can acquire the right-of-way, but we would not be able to construct it until, until we bring that into the UGB.
And, and just second, ask one more question. That piece between Glen Creek and Cameo, have we acquired any right-of-way at all? We haven't done any acquisition?
No, we stopped work, when council stopped work two years ago, we were at some percent design, we're ready, we were doing the survey work.
Okay. And then, the amount we have left for the bond, could we acquire the right-of-way there? Would we have leftover if we did that? Would we expend all of those funds?
We probably would not expend all of the $3.6 million on right-of-way acquisition in that, in that piece.
Okay.
And then there'd be money to acquire, you know, the, you know, whatever right-of-way in whatever order we want to do it.
I'd be interested to know how much we think it might cost.
We have that.
Way to get that input.
Yep.
I think what I'm hearing, and just see if this answers a bunch of your questions along the way, maybe we can move through this one, is this is all going to come up in the budget process, in the, in the capital improvement plan, and that's where you'll have your chance to really talk this one through. Right now, what we've got is an information report on a whole bunch of congestion relief issues that are apparently just fine with everybody, because I'm not hearing any questions. Is that what I'm... Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Louis, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, I, I'll try this just for the sake of timing this, but the conclusion I came to was that the report from staff is informational, but actually 12 of the 17 issues that they brought up, I have to be continued, because they're needing to meet with ODOT or stats or... And all of, all of those meetings are supposed to be happening this month. For me, what would help is to have a work session on just Marine Drive, a work session in May, because I believe this issue needs to be discussed and needs to be vetted to a point where it, it does... a point where it deserves some time. This has been in the plans for twenty years. It's time to make a decision.
We'll talk about a work session, but maybe talk some other things, too. Go ahead, Councilor.
Thank you. I have another question on the recommendations, and I'm looking at number six, which is close the north crosswalk at Front and Court Streets. And it says that would, it may reduce queue lengths on Court Street during peak hours. In other words, if you're trying to turn right-hand onto that. But won't that also potentially reduce queues coming off the bridge to get on Front Street?
No, there's only one crosswalk on the west side. There's two crosswalks on the east side of the median, there's only one crosswalk on the west side.
Okay, and the crosswalk on the west side is not being considered to be closed?
No.
Okay.
Councilor Hoyt?
I actually wanted to change topics if we're done with Marine Drive.
We are done with Marine Drive until we get to the CIP. Great.
I do.
Or you can have private conversations offline.
Excuse me, I have one more on the congestion task force. And that is on number seven, provide a park and ride shuttle at Wallace. I'm wondering if it would be possible to do some sort of parking count studies there so we can see how much of that park is utilized, is utilized more or less morning, evening, morning, afternoon, evening, or the weekend, so we can get an idea of how that might work.
Sure we can.
Councilor Hoyt?
Thank you, I wanted to change topics.
Go ahead.
And I wanted to take the city manager up on his offer to provide some more information on the cyanotoxins on item six point E. He has a couple of slides, and I think it's important.
Yes.
Important topic for people to hear about.
We just happen to have Mark Bechtel and Brian Martin here to provide you a few slides. What we're going to do is provide you just a little information on the capital improvements that we're working on related to addressing these issues, and there's a lot of money being spent, and that's what Brian is going to do, and then Mark will talk a little bit about what we're done in preparation for this year and next year. And they've been instructed to be brief.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. Thank you. I'll jump right into it since Director Fernandez has introduced a topic. This first slide here, I wanted to just kind of take you back to Garan Island and how our operations work out at the island. The island is about thirty miles west of Detroit Reservoir, and what I'm showing on here is on the slide, the North Sandiam River goes on both sides of the island. The north branch is on the high side of the island, the south branch is on the low side of the island. Take you through how the treatment works in normal operations. In normal operations, water enters at the intake over where the green starts. By gravity, it flows into our slow sand filters. And if you remember, our slow sand filters have a biological layer called a schmutzdeck, and that layer then takes out the contaminants before it filters through the sand. And then, once it gets through the filters, it travels west on the island where we add chlorine, fluoride, soda ash for pH. It goes into our transmission mains and heads towards Turner and then towards Salem. We've spent the last six or seven months actually looking at how we can operate better for cyanotoxins, and we've really come up with three approaches. One approach is to operate our roughing filter and add acetic acid, so those are some components of what you saw last summer. A new approach we have is actually modifying chlorination levels. And then, the third approach is operating the powdered activated carbon system, so that's something that we saw last summer as well. So, one thing we learned last summer as we were trying to get our powdered activated carbon up and running was that, once we started using our roughing filter, it actually formed a biological layer of its own, and we started pushing water through that roughing filter. So, we actually had an initial filtration before it went to the slow sand filters. And after we bought our testing equipment, we were able to actually take samples all throughout the plant, so we could actually look at toxin levels from where it entered at the intake, all the way through the channel, after the roughing filter, at the pump station, after each slow sand filter. So, we were able to take readings all the way through the process. And that roughing filter became a very important part of our treatment process. So, under the scenario where we use that roughing filter, water again comes in through our intake, goes through the roughing filter, filters through, we add acetic acid. If you remember also, last year, we used acetic acid to help our slow sand filters actually operate better to eat the toxins. We pump the water, once it's got the acetic acid into the slow sand filters, after it works its way through the filters, and it goes back to the west end of the island, we add the chlorine, fluoride, and soda ash before it heads into our transmission system. So, that's actually our first line of defense this year. We've done some work on the roughing filter, and I'll show you here in a couple of slides the work we've done out there to get ready for the season. What's new is an approach to actually increase chlorine levels as water leaves the plant. So, it would follow that same approach that we just saw, but rather than just treating to disinfect the water to make sure it stayed free of bacteria in our distribution system, we can actually increase those chlorine levels a little bit, and that's actually a treatment process for cyanotoxins as well. What we've done is we've installed some facilities at our Franz and Reservoir, which is about six, actually, it's about ten miles downstream, excuse me, from the island. And we can actually reduce the chlorine levels back to what we normally treated at to get it so it's, you don't notice a taste difference than what you would if the chlorine dosage was higher. So, this is one of the systems that we put in place, this is at Franz and Reservoir. So, as the water would leave Garan Island, we'd maybe increase the chlorine dosage up from normal of about two parts per million, maybe up to two and a half, three, even close, even perhaps even up to four, which is the threshold that the EPA regulates us to. As the water travels down our transmission main, that higher chlorine dosage actually can oxidize the toxins and take them out of the water. When the water gets to Franz and Reservoir, we add some compounds, drops the chlorine level back down, then it gets distributed into our system. So, that'll be a new approach. And then we have the powdered activated carbon approach that we're still going to be using. So, under the powdered activated carbon approach, again, water enters at our inlet, we add the powder activated carbon, we mix it through this red zone to keep it in contact with the water to absorb the toxins. After it leaves that area, it goes into our pack settling basin. This is something last summer that we struggled a little bit trying to get the pack to settle out. The water goes through that basin into our roughing filter. Again, that roughing filter works in two ways here. One, it actually treats toxins, and the other way is it actually removes the remaining pack that doesn't settle out. So, we add our acetic acid, put it back into our slow sand filters, and then we're ready for it to leave the island. What we did this last winter is we ran.
I just want to check, this is done in the event you find cyanotoxins?
Yes.
This would be the process?
That would be the process, right. And it's kind of a stepped-up process, and Mark's going to talk about that real briefly. First, just the roughing filter, then we would increase chlorine, and then we'd introduce the pack again as well. So, what we found was by grading out that south basin, we were able to increase the settling time from one hour to two hours. So, as that water flowed through the basin originally, about one hour is all we could get, it wasn't getting all of the pack out of it. By widening it and adding a couple of slow reducers there in red, we're actually able to gain two hours. So, we're going to double the time for it to settle. We re-sanded that roughing filter because, again, that roughing filter actually worked as a good method of reducing algal toxins. And through the course of the season, as we kept scraping it, as it would clog up, the sand level got very low. So, now, we've put about forty-four hundred cubic yards of sand in it that has been cleaned, and it's back up to the optimum thickness so that we can get through the summer with it. We also have, we're actually in the process of upgrading the acetic acid pump, and we put some flow monitors in it. And so, these are just a couple of pictures of the work with the roughing filter. So, we had a sand cleaning operation in that left photo, and then we're placing that filter sand in the right photo. That is all complete, and the roughing filter is actually running right now. And then that south basin, as we widen it out, these are just some photos of actual machinery out there doing that widening. And that'll really take us through the next two years, and what we need to get through the next two years is time until we can get an ozone treatment plant in place. And so, last summer when we were dealing with the algal toxins, our engineer, Corolla Engineers, was looking at the best way ultimately to take care of algal toxins at the plant, and ozone treatment was found to be the best technique. We actually brought a second firm in to do a peer review last fall to confirm again that that was the best technique to use, and they confirmed it. And one of the things about ozone is it treats so many different types of contaminants, pathogens, toxins, it's just a very, very effective treatment process. Because of it, it actually increases our flexibility. So, it's been proven in Oregon and across the US. We actually did an RFP this last winter to hire a design firm to do it. Corolla won the, were selected as the winning consultant to do the work. We've already started design, we're planning to start construction in 2020. In order to do that, we're going to use an alternate form of project delivery. And so, next month, we're actually going to bring a staff report forward to get your approval to use CMGC, which is a construction manager, general contractor method of doing the work, similar to the police station. And if we do that, we can start work, I said, in January, and that will allow us to begin operation in 2021. And our initial sighting at this point in time shows the ozone treatment facility kind of right near where the pump station is located now. So, those are our short-term and intermediate solutions, as well as our long-term solution.
And the other problem is the detection and notification, that's all beefed up?
That's, and Mark's here to talk.
That's Mark, okay.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Mark Bechtel, I'm the Public Works Operations Manager, and I just want to take a few minutes to talk about how we will generally respond to the algal season and any issue we may have with cyanotoxins in the drinking water. One of the things we've done is really we've tried to take on a very comprehensive approach to how we would deal with this upcoming algal season. And this comprehensive plan of response or approach we have deals with everything from monitoring our watershed to our sampling plan. You've seen a lot of the improvements that'll deal with our treatment plan, how we would now use the new regulations that are in effect from the Oregon Health Authority, if we had to go into health advisory, how we would do that, and then a very important strategic communications plan. One of the things that we've been very fortunate is to now have some more tools at our disposal to help monitor the entire watershed. And one of those is a partnership that we've had with the Prediction Lab, which is a group out of Oregon State University that does quantitative analysis on the water conditions in the Detroit Reservoir, and they're able to provide us and the public with a quantitative forecast of what the conditions are like in the reservoir and the probability of having any kind of algal bloom or toxins in the water. This is the first year they've been able to do that. We're not relying on this tool. We still have staff up there making observations all the time, but it's another tool in the toolbox that we have that gives us a chance, a little bit of a heads-up of when we may start seeing algae blooming in the reservoir. Their work does not include the river itself, just the reservoir. Another thing that's new for this year is we have very prescriptive, adoptative administrative rules from the Oregon Health Authority. If you remember from last year, we worked under a set of EPA guidelines and advice from the Oregon Health Authority. This year, we have, again, very prescriptive rules that tell us which toxins to test for, total microcystins and cylindrical spermopsin. And for a former streets guy, the saying that word is a challenge for me, but cylindrical spermopsin. We now have very prescriptive rules on the methods that we use. We have our own laboratory testing equipment, the Eliza test machine, and a backup machines on the way. We have, we're told our schedule and locations, we know the health advisory limits, and we are given very clear instructions on how and when to notify the public, and if we do have an advisory, when to come out of it. One thing that I want to stress is that we use what's now a two-part test, and that is if we have an initial sample on any given day that shows that we are exceeding the health advisory level for either of those two cyanotoxins, we then, the next day, and we consider the next day to be one minute after midnight, can take another sample, run that through the lab, and within twenty-four hours, we can have an initial test result and a confirmation result telling us if we need to go into an advisory or not. So, sixteen to eighteen hours after our first set of results, we would have the second set of results, and then we can tell the public with certainty what the status is of our drinking water. And that is a very large improvement over last year where we had to use out-of-state laboratories, and there was this two-to-three-day lag time. So, essentially, next-day service. Brian, talk to you about the different improvements going on on the island. Those different methods or barriers that we now have available to us to take out the cyanotoxins would trigger at different times. So, for example, when we start seeing, observing blooms in Detroit Reservoir, we will start that action of using the roughing filter and using the acetic acid to make our filters more robust. When we start to see detections of cyanotoxins in the reservoir, we will begin operating that increased chlorination treatment method that, again, increases the chlorine, and then after a certain period of contact, we can dechlorinate it or reduce the chlorine and bring it down to normal levels. If we begin to see toxins detected at the Garan Island intake that are greater than a health advisory level, then we will turn on the powdered activated carbon system and use that. So, all three barriers would be in place as the, as the level of activity increases. Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. Bechtel. Can we get a copy?
Can you get it a little closer to your mic? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can we get a copy of this slide, especially for the neighborhood chairs meeting? I know this has come up with season in the Neighborhood Association, and this is really helpful. Thank you.
Absolutely, yeah. So, again, we increase our efforts as the activity increases with cyanotoxin in the We are fairly confident that with these three different barriers in place, we should be able to handle the cyanotoxins that come our way, but we know that, you know, no plan is one-hundred percent perfect. Equipment failures can happen, the cyanotoxin load can be so high that we could not remove enough of it, and so, we still need to be prepared to be able to issue a health advisory if we needed to. And we have done quite a bit to prepare ourselves as a city in case that were needed. Last year, we found ourselves frankly a bit unprepared in how we had, as far as equipment for distributing water in an emergency, and we were very dependent on our partner municipalities to provide us equipment. I'm very pleased to say that this year, we have a full fleet of potable water tankers, we have all of the equipment and tanks and dispensing equipment ready to go that we could do eight of our own bulk water distribution stations. We have several tractor-trailer loads of bottled water ready to go if we needed to distribute it to those that are homebound or non-ambulatory. So, we have the ability to go into a vulnerable person advisory, which is what we had last year, which is essentially children, elderly, those with a compromised immune systems, and pets. We could go into that with our own resources and handle that within two to four hours of declaring a health advisory. We certainly hope that we would never have to issue an "all persons do not drink" because that would require us to distribute about three hundred thousand gallons of drinking water a day to our community. But we have given it quite a bit of thought over the past year, and that effort would take about eighteen water stations going twenty-five hours a day. We would then need the use of the National Guard, our Oren partners, other counties and cities. And even then, we would only be able to provide about half of that three hundred thousand gallon demand. We would have to rely on retail sales of bottled water and donations for the rest. But still, we are much better prepared, I would say, as a state of Oregon and as a city if we had to deal with either of those two types of advisories. So, that's where we're at. Any questions about our preparations?
Counselor Anderson? Very good, Counselors. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Bechtel, and everybody else who worked on this. A couple of questions, and they're basically based on, questions and comments on page five of your report. The first relates to the next-day testing. I presume there is some correlation between the fact that these levels have to be in the water for at least two days and more, and for there to be an effect on vulnerable people, and certainly on not all, all persons. Is that correct?
You are correct, Counselor. The, the, you probably remember from last summer, the, the 10-day window that we talked about, and, and frankly, probably, we did not articulate that as well as we could have or should have last year. That hasn't changed. The, the, the effect of this toxin requires 10 days of exposure to statistically then incur illness.
Yeah.
And that is why we are so, so, we have worked so hard to develop a system where we can provide, you know, one day's warning.
Right. So, so, it, it was 10 days, and, but we're now going to be able to do something, confirm it on the second day, and then we'll start taking action as opposed to waiting till days beyond that.
Correct.
Then the other, this is just a comment, and this is right about in the middle of the paragraph, where it says, the middle paragraph, says, "The mayor and city council would be notified prior to the issuance of any water quality health advisory." I think we all know from last time this happened, that was a big concern of the council, that we needed to be notified early and often, and so, that's a very good part of your plan, and I appreciate that, because that was a whole big concern of the council, is we didn't know until 10 minutes or 15 minutes before the council meeting, and then here we are. So, thank you for doing that, and we, we look forward to, well, we don't look forward to getting the warnings, but we know if it comes. Then I have one question about cost, and I don't know if you're the person or Director Fernandez is, and that's to the ozone treatment. Really, two things. How much would that cost? And secondly, I know the money we spent last summer came from the fact that we've set aside a reserve accounts, and that's part of everybody's water bill, goes toward a reserve, and I think the cost was $2 million, and we could cover that out of the reserves. What happens with the ozone treatment? With that, is that capable, or are we going to have to do something else?
No, the, the difference there is that we will have to be issuing revenue bonds. That will come to the council. We talked about that at the rate hearing, and we'll talk about it at, at the Budget Committee, and we are planning to issue those bonds next February. So, we'll be at council probably towards the end of the year to get permission to do that. These projects are in the 30 to $50 million range, depending on what project. The ozone itself is about 30, but we have additional water wells, and we have additional telemetry, and we have flood control. So, there's, there's a number of improvements that we're doing at, at Garin Island. So, so, our plan is to issue about $50 million worth of debt, to be able to address that, all backed by the utility. And we've done the forecasting, and the utility rates can, can cover that. There's been yeoman's work done by our analyst and engineering, Tammy Stars, to move projects, and you'll see some of that in, in the CIP, where some projects in the utility have been delayed by a year or two to be able to, to afford these projects here that, that are much more critical at this time.
Okay.
And then, Mr. Mayor, if I might, I, apparently a slide fell off of my show here, but one of the biggest efforts we have put forward is improving our communications, our public information, as part of this effort. And we have a, a team of public information staff that have gone all the way to Alabama to be trained in emergency media relations. We have a strategic communication plan that is already being implemented. If you go to the city's website, you'll see lots of information on this topic. And if we, you know, if we do go in any kind of a advisory, that would be the city's website or social media. The days of having a single public information officer are long gone. We now use a, a team of over a dozen people if we need to, to, to keep the public informed and, and to give them the information they need.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on. What else have we got going on? Yeah?
If I can just add in one piece quick.
Yeah.
At the watershed council meeting a couple of weeks ago, we had Matt Titus, I think it is, from the Prediction Lab group out of OSU, speaking to their, their models. And I think we gave them a lot of good information, and we learned a lot from them. It may be something we want to actually see down the line as well, because it's actually really fascinating, working towards a neural network with, you know, a ton of different parameters coming in, and it'll spit out, hey, you have a 25 to 50% chance of having a cyanotoxin bloom hitting you today.
Okay.
And so, working to narrow that down, and we may want to actually, once we get that a little tighter.
Okay.
Consider maybe bringing them in.
Okay.
Nothing else, just to show the public, as well as council, kind of how we're looking at that.
Counselor Hayes.
Thank you. Just really quick, back on the congestion relief task force, at your April 29th meeting with ODOT, will you be coming back to council with information about how that meeting went? Since so many of those things depend on this meeting happening?
Yeah, we'll have to decide whether, I would imagine that we dock it at, at an additional staff report at some point with reporting.
We'll be, we'll be providing periodic updates on the action plan requested by council, and certainly other decision points, such as the budget, capital improvements, other city plans that will include the results of those outreaches to agencies that are part of the congestion relief. Brian.
All right. Okay. Counselor Lewis.
I, this might be the time to bring in, maybe it's just me, but the idea of a, of a work session to go over the, the staff reports and the future staff reports, so we can better make decisions on how to direct staff? Or are we just going to continue to get information and not make decisions?
Well, hopefully, you're asking and, and sort of sharing your concerns as we go through these information items, you know, sort of about when will you be back with action for us? Is action required? I think the staff does a good job of, of kind of letting us know sort of what they're planning on bringing back in terms of action items. But this is mainly to just keep you informed as to the kind of stuff going on, and also to just give you information leading forward into some decision-making, like the CIP and some other things, just sort of what, where are we in all this stuff? I hope that's good enough. If not, we can start looking at work sessions. We can do that every Monday night if you'd like. Yeah, I thought I'd get no takers on that one. Jackie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I'm still unclear, at least, on the congestion relief task force for the local circulation, number one, the recommendation of constructing Marine Drive, because, I mean, several of us have, have asked whether or not we're supposed to make a decision on that.
No.
So, we're not.
No.
So, but, but then, what it says next steps for city council, unless otherwise directed by council, recommend proceeding with a right-of-way acquisition. Is that going to go forward then, or?
They are going to get directed by the city council as the, both the Budget Committee and the city council through the, the CIP.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, they're not going to, they're not building anything without our okay.
Okay.
And they know that. Don't you?
We do, Mayor.
Thank you. I, I don't think he'd let us do so. He, he's going to want to vote from us on anything he does right now, on this stuff, I think. Okay. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move on to item 6H. Excuse me. I move that there be no actual removal of adult nonfiction books for any reason other than condition until council reviews the May tracking report, along with any recommendations of staff or the lab.
Second.
I'd like to make a second motion as well. I moved-
Why don't we, why don't, kind of moving backwards here, aren't we?
I think I have to make my second motion before we can-
Why don't you go ahead and make your motion, and we'll, we'll figure out our way to get to your first motion.
Thank you. I move that the rules be suspended, and we vote on the motion tonight.
Second by Anderson.
If I may. To the second motion first?
I'm going to let the city attorney put this in context.
Excellent. For purposes of clarification, a counselor motion usually has to be included into the packet before it comes out. So, in order to vote on it tonight, you would need to suspend your rules, which requires a two-thirds majority of counselors' presence. That's the purpose of the two motions.
Counselor Lewis.
Just want to make sure we'll be voting on these separately.
Yes, we'll be voting on suspending the rules so we can vote on his motion. The question is, do you want to make a snap decision on this tonight? That's, I mean, not, not that it's bad decision, it's just a quick decision. Rather than having the time you normally have to see the materials in advance, the motion in advance.
Perhaps I could speak to my motion.
I'm, I'm speaking to the guy asking me a question. Do you have a question too, Counsel?
Nope.
Okay, you go ahead and speak your motion then.
The motion is not necessarily debatable, is it?
I believe it is, Counsel.
Well, let's let him debate it.
The reason for my motion to act on this tonight and not at the next regularly scheduled meeting is because this action would take place in the month of May. Our next meeting isn't until the second week of May, and it would be moved at that point. So, we have to, if we're going to actually do this, we have to act on it tonight.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Okay. So, we've got your motion. Do you want to discuss your motion?
I think we've heard a lot of testimony tonight. I think it pretty much encapsulates the reasons why I made the motion. I, I made my statement at the beginning of the meeting. We've got a lot of passion around this issue. We've got a lot of information. I think we, we actually need some facts from the library staff as they do this weeding of books, so we can make an informed decision in the future, so we can send it to the lab, so they can actually consider what they, the information from the recommendation before we make that decision. And I just think it's the prudent way to move forward.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. You know, in past discussions of this, I've been very concerned about process. What is our process? Has the questions been asked and answered? And I'm not so sure that it has, but I, the process has been completed, and I think Counselor Hoy's motion to give us a chance to do that. I will also say that in past discussions, and I cannot tell you who said this or who didn't say this, but it was my impression that the council was told, or at least thought that we had approved the book policy.
Let me let the city attorney speak to that.
Okay.
There is testimony earlier about the, the jurisdiction of the, of the LAB, the Library Advisory Board, as well as staff. The section of the code that was cited was SRC 18050, which is specific to the Library Advisory Board. It basically says that it has, one of its powers and function is to make recommendations to council regarding rules and policies. That section of the code also states that this chapter should not be construed as depriving the elected or appointed officials of the city of any power they may have under the, the state law, or the code, or the charter. Or SRC Chapter 2 provides the, the city manager and the library administrator with specific authority to administer the Salem Public Library, including with that is our administrative policies such as this. So, long story short, the, you are, the, neither the library staff nor the LAB are required to have council adopt this sort of administrative policy.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney, and I understand that. And I understand that the lab is an advisory board to the administration, not an advisory board or commission to the council, and as such, they're to help them do that. And there's a second, the 18-
To, just to clarify, it is advisory to council as well.
Okay. And, and there can be, so, to me, there's two things here. One is lab makes a recommendation to the library board, excuse me, to the library administrator and the city administrator, and they act on that, and they just let us know what happened. The other one is the council says, hey, we want to look at this, and brings it up. And, and we've talked before in the past about the dichotomy between, here's the council setting policy, and then here's the administration, and there's kind of a gray area where does policy go down into administration, and does administration rise up into policy? And that's kind of where I think we are. And I know, I was under the impression, and I think other counselors too, that we approved this, like, maybe as a consent calendar that came before us, and we, we just approved it. But it's apparent now, it just came to us as an information item. So, with that in mind, I think we ought to look at this, and I will also tell you that in a normal situation, my default would be to go to the administration because of the policy-administration split, that we say the poli, the policy is, you need to do a good policy of calling your books, and then we leave it up to the administrator to do that. So, I don't know that I'm going to support one way or the other. My default would be to support the administration, but I just think because of the passions that Counselor Hoy has talked about and everybody else here today, we ought to, we ought to give this a little further airing.
I had a chance to serve on the Library Advisory Board, and I really hope this doesn't, from my experience, I hope it doesn't result in concerns on their part, that they are given full-throated opportunity to be involved in this process. When I was on the Library Advisory Board, somebody, I was told by the librarian, who was pretty, not particularly transparent, that the decision to eliminate bookmobiles in this community had been made by somebody. Well, our reaction on the Library Advisory Board was, what? And they were gone. And we were told pretty much, forget it. You don't have a voice in this thing, and I don't want to send that message to this Library Advisory Board. I found it absolutely demoralizing to have that happen. So, I, and I, I think what you're saying, Counselor, is really on point, and I think the, the motion is on point in that way as well, that there is a way to do this that can really be done right. Or you can do like they did when I was on the Library Board and just shut down the bookmobiles without much, so much as a how-to-do, and it was really, really disturbing to me. I grew up with them. I thought it was really important. I still think they're important. I still don't understand why that, I, I do, it costs 12 bucks to circulate that book as opposed to whatever it was, two bucks out of like some, some Jim Crack number like that. But I know that when I lived in rural eastern Washington, it's the only way I could get to a library, and it mattered to me, and I know it matters to people in this community who can't get to our library, particularly on the east side of Salem. So, I, I really appreciate what you're, you're saying, but I hope, I hope we really listen carefully to our library board and, and the librarian on this, because I, I hear a lot of information, and I'm really disturbed by it. I even checked on a book my wife wrote to make sure it was still in the library, and the librarian very nicely looked it up and said, yep, we gave out more, we got a couple, and so did some other ones, so, yeah. What a, what a lot of service I got out of that little note. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to clarify, my motion actually underscores the recommendation of the Library Advisory Board. It all, the only difference is, is that we're saying, don't actually discard the books while we're doing the work that the Library Advisory Board has asked them to do.
Okay. Yeah, Counselor.
I won't ask if that book by your wife was five years old or older, but I will ask the-
Tell you what, I've read it.
Maker of the motion, if you could repeat the motion, please.
I move that there be no actual removal of adult nonfiction books for any reason other than condition until council reviews the May tracking report, along with any recommendations of staff or the lab.
Do I speak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just struck by the process that brings this testimony here tonight, and I really was struck by the testimony from one of our citizens in Salem about books opening minds and touching our hearts. And I understand the passion around this issue. I appreciate Counselor Hoy bringing this motion forward. I think it's really important. Earlier, we talked about the homelessness task force. We talked about the continuing of care, and Commissioner Carlson brought up planning, coordination, autonomy, and money. And I just felt like, wow, this really applies here, too, because the way that we go about planning these issues, the way that we're communicating, even tonight in talking about the algal bloom and our response as a city, so much of what we do is communication, making sure that people are heard, making sure the process is transparent, and making sure that going forward, everyone's in line. So, I'm not seeing a, you know, this side, that side. I'm seeing, isn't this part of our job to go where people are and get their buy-in? And that really needs to happen, both on the board and with us. So, I appreciate the motion.
Counselor.
Thank you. Just a question for Counselor Hoy, I guess. What is, what is your, your goal, I guess, when we come back or we convene as a council in June? Are you hoping for a staff report, or are you hoping for, I'm trying to get outcomes here. What's, what's the outcome you're anticipating with that? Is that just reviewing the books that were withheld that would normally have been deaccessioned, or, I'm just trying to understand that better.
So, my goal would be to get the, get detailed information on the, the factors that went into the decision to, to remove a book from the library. So, we have that-
So, we have that sort of vex level of detail that we don't have currently, so we can make a thorough review of the policy and how it's been implemented.
So, you're looking for a staff report?
Yes.
It sounds like, then, about why each book was removed, and the criteria was used, and all of that.
I believe that's the intention.
I'm gonna suggest everybody read this. I think it'll answer a lot of the questions you're describing, if you'll read this, not you, but if anyone will read this. It's a very good report by the librarian and her staff, and I think reflecting the Library Advisory Board. And I think it had a lot of really good information that countered information I was getting in other ways. And I, I have real problems trying to sort this out, and I hope they can kind of sort out, take this testimony we heard tonight on both sides, help us understand what's going on out there. There's a lot of professional concern that really bothers me when I hear from long-term library employees concerned. I, I want to understand this much better and not make the same mistake, I think, the council made years ago, and that librarian years ago, and take away our bookmobile. It'd be terrible. Go ahead.
I, I just want to make sure that this issue is brought forward in a, in a quick manner. I could easily say that I think we've gone through a process, there's been an opportunity to be heard, there's a difference of opinion, there will always be a difference of opinion. Are we, are we in a position that we could make a decision? I think we are. But I, I'm fine with getting the detailed, more detailed information, as long as that happens quickly. I think that there's a lot of folks that have vested themselves in this long enough, and they need an answer.
Well, if I may, Mayor, the library staff, well, actually, the Library Advisory Board has requested this additional information that Counselor Hoy is referring to in his motion, and that information will be provided to the Library Advisory Board at its June meeting. I don't know when they meet in June, and certainly, though, following that lab meeting, that Library Advisory Board meeting, we would schedule it for the next city council meeting. So, you would have the information from the library staff, the library advisory board's recommendation, action, conclusions regarding that information, and then council can make its, its own decision based upon, upon that additional information.
Yes, Counselor?
Thank you very much. I would ask that if the library could, if the city manager could make the report to the lab available to the council at the same time it goes to the lab, so that'll just give us some more time to look at this, because this was, this was a fairly dense report, although I did like the pictures.
I did, too.
I could read the pictures, but, but the more information we have and the more time we have to study it before the council meeting, that'd be helpful.
But really be sure to read this.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
It really is quite good.
I'm gonna let you read everything.
The other thing, too, I hope, I know you all joined me in wanting to reassure the librarian and the professional staff in our library that we're very proud of their work. We're not trying to undercut them. We're trying to deal with a community concern and try to find an answer that, that sort of brings everybody to the table with goodwill. I, I do get concerned about some of the name-calling that goes on, but it's standard. We're used to it in, in social media. In fact, I heard it tonight, too. I really am uncomfortable with some of the questioning of people's professional ethics and ability. But I, I hope the librarian or staff understand, that is not our attitude. We are not being influenced by that kind of negative and ad hominem statement from either side, so. Okay. All right. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, first readings. Unless there's anything else. Anyone else want to? Okay, first readings.
Ordinance Bill 6-19 and ordinance relating to land use, amending SRC 50.710, 64.005, .275, .300, 111.001, 200.020, .205, .035, .050, .80, 080, .205, .210, .310, .315, .350, 205.030, .055, .060, .070, 210.025, .035, 220.005, .010, 225.010, 235.015, 240.010, 245.010, 250.010, 300.100, .210, .230, .300, .310, .320, .420, .520, .620, .720, .810, .820, .830, .970, 400.065, 521.005, 523.005, 524.005, 525.015, 531.030, 533.015, 534.015, 535.015, 551.010, 556.015, 603.205, 604.2025, 605.025, 606.025, 612.020, 613.025, 614.025, 615.025, 616.027, 025.619, 025.626, 025.631, 020, 632.020, 633.020, 800.035, .050, 806.055, .060. Renumbering and amending SRC 64.320, .325, .330, .510, repealing SRC 64.035, .01315, .335, 200.045, 300.990, 512.005, and creating new provisions 50.720, 300.1045, and 800.065.
Any questions? No.
Should we ask?
Counselor Hoy, go ahead.
I move that we advance Ordinance Bill Number 6-19, amending the Unified Development Code and other chapters of the Salemらい Code to a public hearing in second reading.
Second by Kazer. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Was this, was this Bryce's work product again? Yeah. No wonder we don't see him very often. What, do you keep him in a room somewhere, just writing this stuff out? Nor would, gosh. Second readings. Well, thank you. You did a great job.
Ordinance Bill 4-19, an ordinance relating to urban renewal, making a substantial amendment to the City of Salem's North Gateway Urban Renewal Plan, and directing that notice of approval be published. Counselor Leung?
Aye. I make a motion?
No.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Here.
No, I don't want to vote. It's okay. Yes or no?
Say aye.
Aye.
Counselor Osick?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Cook?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kazer?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. And we are adjourned. I call to order the city. Any what? Oh, not that I'm aware of.
Are we doing the urban rule next?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, is there someone, did you want to comment? Okay. You're okay, okay. Okay, we're adjourned. Gee, I didn't want to scare you guys. And we're gonna call the Urban Renewal Agency for April 22nd to order. Please call and roll.
Board Member Kazer? Board Member Anderson? Board Member Nanki? Board Member Leung?
Here.
Board Member Osick?
Here.
Board Member Hoy?
Here.
Board Member Cook?
Here.
Board Member Lewis?
Here.
Chair Bennett?
Here. Okay. I don't have anyone signed up for public comment. I don't see any additions or deletions. Consent calendar.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Consent calendar includes the March 19, I'm sorry, March 25th, 2019 draft Urban Renewal Agency minutes, and the North Gateway Urban Renewal Area Substantial Amendment. Have a whole, whole long list, sorry. Page two. All right, continuing on, Item 3.3A, agreement between the City of Salem, the Urban Renewal Agency, and the Oregon Department of Administrative Services for site work at the Mill Creek Corporate Center. Item 3.3B, a benefit cost analysis for potential Salem Convention Center expansion. It authorizes the use of up to $80,000 when allocated riverfront downtown urban renewal area funds for a benefit cost analysis for potential future expansion of the Salem Convention Center. Item 3.3C, Downtown Salem Streetscape Plan, approves the City of Salem Downtown Streetscape Plan. Item 3.3D, is an exception to the North Gateway Urban Renewal Area Grant Program policies for building and site improvements at the Salem Kaiser Career Technical Education Center. It approves a North Gateway Urban Renewal Area Grant Exception Request of $400,000 for the construction of building and site improvements to support the completion of the CTEC at 3501 Portland Road, and authorize a $400,000 grant award. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Okay, Counselor Kazer?
Thanks. I just have one quick question, and that is on Item 3.3C with the Streetscape Plan. And the question is, is, down the road, if we want to look at changing the configuration of streets from one-way to two-way, that sort of thing, how does that intersect with the Streetscape Plan, as far as planning and possibly amending the plan? How does that work?
So, road configuration is an entirely different thing than Streetscape, and that would be addressed through the Transportation System Plan. However, we have been in partnership with Public Works, looking at conversions of State Street and Court Street to two-way, rather than one-way, and extending that up beyond the currently, the current two-way sections.
If we were to amend the Streetscape Plan, after we make, say, we modify streets to go two-way, now we have some more space to, you know, play with in terms of sidewalks and all of that, then we would come back and modify the Streetscape Plan, or?
Yes, but it likely wouldn't change the right-of-way line or increase the sidewalk.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
I want to, I want to second Counselor Kazer's concern about this. I've been watch, waiting for a long time for two-way in State and, and now two-way in Court, and I think it's really important that that be part of our planning for the future, and that understanding it's not what the scope of this project was, but this project and that have such a tremendous impact on that downtown, and I think positive impact on downtown. So, it'd be really nice to see this stuff start moving forward.
And that is within our CIP, to be funded through the Urban Renewal Agency. That's work that we started just, just a little prior to starting the Streetscape work, but there was information from the Streetscape Plan that was needed in order to inform the design, and, you know, things like, you know, there are going to be signal changes and other things, so we kind of needed to wrap up the Streetscape Plan first.
Okay. Look forward to the continued discussion. Counselor Lewis?
Real quick, just wanted to compliment everybody involved on the grant proposal for CTEC. Wait with great anticipation for the complete bull-out, build-out later this year, and I think it's a shining star for Salem and will be in the future.
I, I didn't want to pull this up, but I do have one question on, on the Mill Creek. The way I look at this, and maybe I'm totally wrong, it seems like the agreement is for grading to fill in a wetland, and then for money to prepare a wetland.
So, yeah, we have two parts. So, there is wetland work, the second phase of wetland development that needs to occur. Then there is also fill for land that is owned by DAS that needs fill in order for it to be developable. So, it's, it's two different parts.
Could that land be classified as a wetland, then?
No, it's not, it's not designated as a wetland. It just needs fill.
Okay.
We don't, do we lose wetlands in this deal, or do we, is it an even trade kind of, how's that?
This isn't a trade of land. This is just a phasing of the construction and a reimbursement agreement.
All righty. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Do we have anything else? Nope. We're adjourned.